Well, welcome everyone to the regular city council meeting for July 12th of 2022. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And if we could please, if you could please stand for the pledge of allegiance, that'd be great. Thank you. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if you could please remain standing, we have an indication this evening. And it looks like that is going to be me. So, God of peace, we invite you to preside over this meeting. When we have different opinions, give us unity of spirit. Help us to patiently listen as others share their points of view. Help us to work as a unified team in combining ideas for a great outcome for our community. Help us to work as a whole rather than as individuals trying to promote our own agendas. May we have a spirit of camaraderie in this room and work together on a shared mission. Amen. Thank you. You can be seated, please. And Mr. Scarlett, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Musgrove?
Present.
Councilmember Nunez?
Present.
Councilmember Walton?
Councilmember Walton is joining us via Zoom. He looks like he's frozen, actually.
Councilmember Walton, can you hear us?
Now, it was working earlier, just for everyone out there. We did check it. There it goes. Councilmember Walton?
Councilmember Walton? Okay. Mayor Pro Tem Jenkins?
Here.
And Mayor Jones?
Here. Okay. If the council could please join me down at the front, we have a smile presentation.
Can I read this first?
Yes, feel free to read it. So, we're actually going to read the presentation for the Smile Award.
Okay.
Mr. Musgrove.
For those in attendance that are not familiar with this, early last year, we initiated the Smile. It's an acronym for San Marcos Inspiration, Leadership, and Excellence. Every other month, one of the council members has the opportunity to identify a person or project or something significant within the city of San Marcos for recognition. And this being my month, I selected the Sheriff's Respect Program. And I'm going to read, first of all, their mission statement. In collaboration with our community, we offer youth comprehensive resources, unique opportunities, and healthy alternatives to delinquency, violence, and a life trapped in the criminal justice system. So, what they do, it's a project of character building and mentoring program designed for students in grades eight through 12. Its goal is to instill responsibility, empathy, service, perseverance, education, courage, trustworthiness in the hearts and minds of our San Marcos youth. The project is a youth development and mentoring program designed for middle and high school students. It was developed within the San Marcos Community Policing Unit in 2014 by deputies Todd Baker and Dustin Nelson, who are with us tonight, with the goal of reducing juvenile delinquency, lowering recidivism, and empowering selected youth to make positive and healthy choices in their lives and within our community. Each meeting offers an uplifting and safe environment where each student can form authentic relationships with positive role models. Academy classes typically include decision-making courses, workshops, athletics, field trips, and student-led discussions. Special guest speakers, including those with lived experience in the justice system, are frequently invited to share their life stories and offer valuable advice to the group.
Please enter your access code, followed by the pound or hash sign.
Bear with us. We're having technical difficulties.
Upon successful completion, graduates?
No digits.
Uh-oh.
Please re-enter your access code, followed by the pound or hash sign.
Graduates possess the necessary skills to make better decisions and improve the quality of life for their families and communities.
No digits. Please re-enter your access code, followed by the pound.
We'll post this on the city's website for you.
No, no, go ahead, go ahead.
Graduates are encouraged to return as student leaders and maintain a relationship with the Respect Project staff. So, would love to have deputies Todd Baker and Dustin Nelson come down, please, to the lectern in the center.
We're just working this out. It's okay.
The access code you entered is invalid. You entered nine, one, eight, seven, seven.
In case you haven't heard enough from me this evening.
To enable audio controls, please enter your audio PIN, followed by the pound or hash sign.
I'm sensing a conspiracy here.
If you do not have a PIN, just press.
The San Marcos City Council does hereby present the San Diego County Sheriff's Respect Project. With the Smile Award for San Marcos Inspiration, Leadership, and Excellence Award for Service to the Community, the Respect Project is being. Mentorship and service to the San Marcos community and the Character Building and Support Service Program for at-risk middle and high school students has served more than 170 youth in our community. Presented this Tuesday, July 12th, 2022, and signed by all members of the council and the mayor. And they are likewise never short of words.
Good evening. Thanks, everybody, for being here. Once again, my name's Deputy Dustin Nelson. To my left, Deputy Todd Baker. It is a privilege and an honor to be here to accept this recognition. Our program is our pride and joy. It's our passion. We do this every day because we love these students and we love what we get to do. This is probably the only time, except for our graduation, that we put a uniform on. So, we get to play a lot of sports. Tomorrow, we're going fishing with our students. Thursday, we're going down to the USS Midway. So, we do a lot of summer enrichment for our graduates. But programs like this, they help us to foster better relationships and bridge the gap between students and law enforcement, as you know, in today's culture and the state of our society right now. There's a lot of issues going on with relationships between cops like us and the students that we serve. And so, this gives us an opportunity to really bridge those gaps and mentor our students and really point them in the right direction to the success that they want for themselves. So, thank you all. Thank you, San Marcos City Council, for the award and recognition. We really appreciate it.
So, for all of you that are not aware, San Marcos is known for our parks. We're actually called San Parkos. And we love to talk about how we love to get our residents out and active. And so, this month is Parks Make Life Better Month. So, that's July of 2022. And they gave us all these little passports. So, that means we have to go to a lot of different places within the city, including the San Marcos Boys and Girls Club. So, there are passports available, I think, at all of our different, our Parks and Rec Department over in, across the way. So, anyway, the San Marcos City Council hereby recognizes Parks Make Life Better Month, July of 2022. Whereas, Parks and Recreation promotes physical, emotional, and mental health and wellness through organized and self-directed fitness, play, and activity. Whereas, Parks and Recreation remains versatile and innovative in providing vital services to communities through local, national, or global emergencies, all while adhering to guidelines set forth by governing agencies. And whereas, Park and Recreation supports the economic vitality of communities by partnering with local businesses and nonprofits and offering events for residents' engagement. And whereas, Parks and Recreation creates memorable experiences through youth sports and enrichment activities, teen centers and programs, senior activity centers, adult fitness and enrichment programs, free community events, events, including Red, White, and Boom that we just had there on the Fourth of July, and then, and beyond. And whereas, Parks and Recreation fosters social cohesiveness in communities by celebrating diversity, providing spaces to come together peacefully, modeling compassion, promoting social equity, connecting social networks, and ensuring all people have access to its benefits. Whereas, Parks and Recreation strengthens community identity by providing facilities and services that reflect and celebrate our community character, our heritage, culture, history, aesthetics, and landscape, and by protecting habitats and open space, connecting people to nature, and promoting the ecological function of Parkland. And whereas, Parks and Recreation supports safe, vibrant, attractive, progressive communities that make life better through positive alternatives offered in the recreational opportunities. Now, therefore, the San Marcos City Council does hereby proclaim July 22 as Parks Make Life Better Month. Do we have someone here from Parks and Rec? Yes, here we are. Come on down, and maybe you can tell us a little bit more about these. Thank you so much. What have you got there?
I'm Amber.
Hi, Amber. Yeah, come over here.
I am the newly appointed Recreation Supervisor for Youth Programs. This is a new thing we're doing for, oh, for the month of July for Parks Make Life Better Month. What the kids do is they come to the community center located across the way, pick up a passport, and they visit each of the pages in the passport and receive a stamp. And once they've received all their stamps, they bring it back to the community center and they receive a little prize bag. We've got Chick-fil-A to donate some little kids' meal cards in here. We have some city swag and some bubbles and a cute little keychain with a key to the city in there. And our aquatic supervisor donated a bunch of free swim passes.
Nice.
Yeah.
Nice. Well, thank you very much. Thank you for everything you do. And then you get to come and take a picture with us.
I also wanted to mention, too, that we offer them in English and in Spanish, so they can come and get them at the.
And what about the adults, since we have one now, too? I guess we can't get the Chick-fil-A.
Yeah. Well, go visit all the sites.
Okay. So, if you haven't been to our parks, please go out and check them out because they are amazing. We have a lot of them. And so, our next order of business is San Diego 211. They're presenting us with a presentation this evening on everything that they do. So, you could just come on down and then pull the microphone toward you, please. Thank you.
I will. Thank you, Mayor. My name is Luis Monteagudo. I'm the Vice President of Community Relation for 211 San Diego. And first of all, I want to thank the mayor, the council, and your city staff for inviting us tonight, but also for your longstanding support of 211 San Diego. We're proud to partner with the city of San Marcos. We really appreciate it. And we're here today to give a brief update on what we're seeing with San Marcos and 211. Let me see if this works. I gotta, oh. I was told to aim it at the white. Ah, there you go. Brief history, 211 was founded in 2005, but in 2007, when we really became known in San Diego, was that when we had the last set of major wildfires in the region. And 211 got stood up right away to assist the Office of Emergency Services. And I'm not going to go through all these timelines, but we've been around for a while. And today, 211 is a private nonprofit organization. A lot of people confuse us with the county of San Diego, but we're not part of the county. We're a nonprofit. And we basically provide services to people who call us. We have live operators who answer the phone call. We have bilingual staff, but we also have a translation service that can help people in more than 200 languages. And we connect people to services and program, more than 6,000 services in our database. Briefly through the numbers here, we are, we're pretty busy. We get over 730,000 calls a year. We have more than 1,200 service providers who are part of our database. And we have around 300 staff, and that's grown the last couple of years. A couple of years ago, we had 150 staff, and now we're up to 300. And the reason why, as you can see here, our call volume has really surged. A few years ago, we were about 400,000. But obviously, that big spike you see is because of the pandemic. During the pandemic, we worked very closely with the county of San Diego to let people know where they could go to get vaccinated, where they could go to get tested. In the beginning, people were calling us to find out what is this coronavirus? What symptoms are they? So, as you can see, we handle a lot of calls, and we're still getting a lot of calls because now we are in the impact stage of the pandemic. People have been calling us because of the economic impact the pandemic has caused, and I'll get to that in a minute. We offer a lot of different services through our navigation program. I should mention, 211 is free to call. Anyone here can call 211, dial it, there's no cost. And our staff are there 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. And again, we service people in different languages. We're an information and referral service, and we are certified by the Alliance of Information and Referral Systems. What that, what that means basically is that the information we provide to the public is something we check out, we try to update it, we try to talk to our nonprofit partners and make sure we have some updated information. A lot of what we do is focused on safety net program, helping people. And these are the programs that assist people with low or moderate incomes. And these programs help cut the poverty rate in the, in the, in the region. We help people with CalFresh to get food, to get nutrition assistance. We help people with Medi-Cal, with the EITC Federal and State Earned Income Tax Credit Program, which a lot of people don't know about. CalWorks and El Hoja County Medical Services. But we also focus on health. When, when someone calls us, we do an assessment, a full assessment of what that person needs. They, they may be calling us for one thing, but by doing an assessment, we can find out there's other ways we can help them. There's other services that we might be able to offer them and close to their homes. Housing, as we know, is a big issue, and we assist, we work with landlords to find affordable housing for people. We also help with housing opportunities for people with AIDS. And we work closely with our clients, do a lot of advocacy and support for them. One of the programs we're really proud about, proud of is Courage to Call, a peer-to-peer veteran service program. We know San Diego has a great military tradition, and we have a lot of veterans who live in San Diego. So, we have a program that is staffed and operated by veterans. We know veterans have their own language, have their own experiences. So, these veterans can talk to people who call, give them a sense of safety and familiarity. And we help active-duty members, too. And this is a program that we do with County Mental, Mental Health System and with Veterans Village of San Diego. And our CEO is an Army veteran himself, so we're very proud of that program. We're missing a photo, but we'll go through that. We do a lot of emergency response, as we, I mentioned earlier. We really became known in San Diego in 2007 with the wildfires. But every year, something comes up. It might be a smaller fire, it might be something else. I'll give you an example. Last year, you may recall, there was a fire on a Navy ship in San Diego Naval Base. We work closely with the City of National City, the Port of San Diego, and the Environmental Health Coalition to find hotel and motel rooms for people in National City who were breathing that smoke from that fire. That was something that we stood up right away and an example of the emergency response. And again, where, when there's an emergency, we want people to call 211 for information about evacuation routes and shelters. That's why 211 really was created. So, the county of San Diego will activate, activate during an emergency, emergency that way, the 911 line, if not inundated with calls about shelter and other information that we can provide. Here's a little demographic of the clients that we served in San Marcos this past year. And I know you have that on your, at your desk there. We served more than 3,500 callers from San Marcos and called us, which is an increase of 25% from the calendar year 2020. Again, a lot of the reason we're getting these calls is that we've been dealing with this pandemic for a couple of years. We've also been dealing with, you know, a tough economy for a lot of people. And so, not just people calling us anymore about, you know, vaccination and testing, people calling us who have lost their jobs, who have fallen behind in their utility payment and their rent. Right now, the biggest health concern that we get from people are physical disability and diabetes. So, health is still a big part of it. But in terms of the broadest needs that we see, those are housing, utility assistance, income support. As you can see here, about 10% of the calls we got from San Marcos were from people who were unsheltered and needed housing. 47% needed housing within days, right away. Other issues we saw, we had 78% who had passed, passed due utility bills. So, 78% of the callers had not paid the utility bills and needed help. And that's not too surprising. We saw that a lot throughout the whole region. We also had 77, 77% of people who called us who sometime ran out of food or, or had actually run out of food. An original, an original comparison, we had more San Marcos resident call us who were in need of CalFresh than we had countywide. Slight percent difference, 7% more called us in San Marcos for that than countywide 5%. But, you know, we had fewer San Marcos resident caller who were actually homeless compared to the county numbers. And last but not least, I want to also mention CIE. CIE is a service and program that are part of 211. And what it is, a network of providers, everything from health clinics to hospitals. And how it's different is that this is more proactive. People who are, CIE is voluntary. So, people who call us, we ask them if they want to be in the CIE if we find out they have several issues or challenges. And by being in CIE, the partner have shared the information for that person, and they can call proactively, reach out to that person and offer, or this family, and offer assistance. So, CIE is a program we're very proud of. It's been around for a few years, and we have a big forum coming up on CIE in, in August. And it's something that, that is becoming more and more popular across the nation. That primarily it. I wanted to go fast to give you an opportunity to ask any questions. And if you do have any questions, I also wanted to introduce Meg Storer, who is our Chief of Staff. She's here also to help out with anything. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Luis. I had a couple of questions, and one of them is of staff. I'm pretty sure we invest in this for our, for our residents. I think it's right around $65,000, is that right?
Yes, we use CDBG money for.
Right. So, we, so we are investing in it. So, I'm glad that we are definitely connected with you. I do also know that we have our, our specialist here from our Housing Division, Candy Roberts. And I know that they've been providing you with updated lists whenever we have new affordable housing and all of that information, which I think is wonderful that you guys are doing that. I do specifically have a question about One Safe Place that just opened. That's a family resource center here, or the Family Justice Center here in San Marcos, which was just opened up on July 5th, I believe it was. I just wanted to make sure you were over there, but I'm assuming that you would. And if you aren't there, I'm assuming that you would be referring people there because that's for any victim of any sort of abuse, even elder abuse. So, that's a huge resource. So, I want to make sure you are connected with them.
I, I am aware of that. The DA staff actually invited me to the opening. I couldn't go because of a conflict. But yes, when we find out about something new like that, we have a department in 211 called the Resources Department. And what they do is they add the new resources to our database, but they also work with our nonprofit partners to make sure their information is updated. Nonprofit partners and, and government can't update the information on their own through the website. They have a link and all that. But that doesn't always happen. So, we're always active about that and letting our Resources Department know. And they are also active, and they're also looking for that information.
Great. Because they also do have a, a food pantry and a lot of other different services over there. And one last thing, I just wanted to make sure you're also aware that we have the San Marcos Veterans Center here, right at City Hall, on our first floor, as you walk in to the left. And that also connects veterans to vital services, including counseling, which is huge, too. So, I want to make sure, if you haven't been over there, definitely need to connect with them so that you know all of the services that they're providing our veterans here in San Diego.
I haven't been there, but I'll be glad to take a look at it and make sure our Resources people know about that, too.
Great. Thank you so much. And any other questions from council?
I just wanted to comment. I was the Sheriff's Emergency Operations Manager at the tail end of the '07 fire, and 211 was kind of a new concept for us. Everything comes in on 911. But what we found was that 211 was a fantastic facilitator. So, what we, we started doing is recommending people with those services that you've illustrated tonight that, that are there to help, to register with 211. So, then when somebody calls in and says, "I need help with this," they're not getting pushed around, put on hold, made to wait. They're connected right to where they need to be. And it's really nice to see that those services have expanded out to where now you are maybe a terminal location for people to call in. Yes, we provide that here. And here's what we're going to do for you.
Yeah. I, I was with the county of San Diego at the time. Some of you I've met before through my work, my previous work with County Supervisor Greg Cox. And I was at the 211 facility when that fire hit, and so was Meg. And we can tell you, we ramped up overnight almost, and we had brought in TVs, more phones, and we really became a part of that response and, and getting people evacuated and getting them to shelters. As I said, we haven't had a major thing like that, thank God, in, in a while. But we do have things that happen every year, whether it be, you know, fi, smaller fires or mudslides or something, or the pandemic, which obviously was an emergency. And we are, you know, we always look out for that. We have, we have a former firefighter who oversees that, and we are always prepared for that. And we have a group of volunteers that can come in doing an emergency to help out. So, thank you for your comments.
Sure. I want to thank you, Luis, and your staff for all the great services you provide, all the residents of the county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Yes. Couple of questions. I think you said about, you had about 3,500 calls from San Marcos residents, roughly.
Yeah.
Are those calls always answered by a live body? Or do they sometimes get, have to leave a message and get a call back?
There, there's always a, a live body there to answer the call, but I'm not going to say they're always answered because what happens is we have a phone system where, for example, during the pandemic, the priority was answering those calls. And like when you call someone in a business or someone, and they say, "If you want this service, hit one," or "This service, hit two." So, we have that type of IVR system. And sometimes people go through the system and find what they're doing. Sometimes, to be honest, people don't wait on the phone. You know, it might take a minute or two, and sometimes people are, you know, don't want to wait, and, and, and they might call us back later, however. But we always have live operators on standby to, to answer the calls.
Okay. And then, did I understand you that the majority of the calls you get are for housing needs? And then, did I understand you that the majority of the calls you get are for housing needs?
I wouldn't say the majority are for housing need. But the trend we've seen lately is we're getting a lot of calls for housing and utility assistance. And not only San Marcos, it's other cities in the region. Again, because of the pandemic impact, the economy. We know San Diego had an expensive place to live. Those are the calls that we've been getting more lately.
Okay. So when you get calls for housing and there's an immediate need, how soon are you able to place that caller? And is it in the same vicinity where they, the same town where they live? Or is it other places?
I can't give you a timeline, but what we try to do is, yeah, we do try to help them, meet them where they are. One thing I need to explain is 211 doesn't have hotel voucher or housing. We don't have the keys to shelters, anything. What we do is when someone calls, we try to connect them to whether Father Joe's Village or a different place that has housing, if they have housing available that night. We try to connect that person to the location, this facility. So, and sometimes it depends, too, on the person calling. Sometimes people have specific need. They have a family and they need a player. They have a pet. They don't want to, like, go without the pet. So it may take a little longer sometimes to place that person. But, you know, we do our best.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Nunez.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of related questions to what Deputy Mayor was asking. First, in regards to the housing needs, right? It's not a secret that we have a major problem here in the city of San Marcos and throughout the county. So I'm just trying to get a sense related to what our Deputy Mayor was asking. So if I call 211 and I need housing assistance, what does that look like? I'm going to call and I'm going to be able to talk to somebody? And then what's going to happen to my request? Am I going to be assigned an individual that's going to walk me through whatever my needs? As you mentioned, everybody's situation might be a little bit different, the sense of urgency. And then related to that question, I'm looking specifically at your slide that you presented that's titled 2021 Housing Needs. If you can take a look at that. I'm trying to see what I'm looking at. And it doesn't quite make sense to me what it is that I'm sure, that I'm looking at.
To go, well, to answer this right away, this is just a snapshot of the people who have called us and what their housing need was at the time. And if they had housing, if they were looking for housing, how immediate the need was. So again, this is not everyone who lives in San Marcos. This is the people, this is, these are the residents of San Marcos who have called us. So it's not, you know, a comprehensive look. And it has basically a snapshot in time of the situation for that person, for that family. And the numbers can change. To go back to what you were asking before, when someone calls us, that is the person that is going to be working with that caller to try to get them housing. It could be connecting them with the county housing folks. It could be connecting them with a shelter. And if not, maybe they just need money, assistance to pay the rent. And it could be trying to find a program that may be able to assist them with back rent and back mortgage. I hope I answered that. If not, I can come back to you and.
Yes and no. I'm just trying to get a sense realistically, because we do get so many of those requests. So it's not quite clear to me. So if somebody has an urgent situation today, are they going to talk to somebody this evening? Is it going to be within 24 hours? Are they going to be able to have some sort of referral or assistance? So I'm just not sure. Then, for instance, if they need, as you mentioned, assistance with, is there direct connection with the county staff that's managing some, maybe some of these programs? And what that really looks like?
They will get direct assistance. They will get someone to talk to, and they will get immediate assistance. What I can't promise you, what I can't tell you is they will get housing right away. It depends on the number of shelter beds available. It depends on whether this type of situation is a good fit for the individual or the family that is calling us. So they will get someone, and they will get someone working on their situation right away. I just can't say that by the end of the night, they'll have a place. It might be, depending on the case, it might be a little bit complicated. It might also be a person with medical issues that might need more of a care situation than simply a roof over their heads. But we do talk, we do talk to them right away.
Okay. And then my other question is related. You mentioned that you're receiving a large number of individuals reaching out from San Marcos that need assistance with CalFresh. Do you have a sense of why that is? Why specifically from San Marcos you might be seeing this larger number?
I can't say why specifically. I can tell you that we've seen this across the board. And the reason is, again, that the economy has been very difficult for people the last year or two. And people have either lost their jobs or the price of food has gone up, and they just need a little assistance. So it's a combination of all those factors.
Okay. And what's 211's involvement with that? So if I call and I'm somebody that maybe doesn't know that CalFresh exists, so I need help, what's 211's involvement? Are you directing me to somebody to work with county health? Or what, what does that look like?
No, we can help them. We can help them apply for CalFresh. We can help them and walk them through the step and take a telephonic signature and help them apply and get that in. Obviously, there's a process the application has to go through. But no, we can help them.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Walton, did you have anything? Okay, no. Thank you very much. We really appreciate your coming this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to the consent calendar, we have 13 items. Are there any items that any council members wish to pull this evening? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
One second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Actually, sorry, we're going to have to go through a roll call because Councilmember Walton is remote today from his office upstairs. Deputy Mayor Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Nunez.
Aye.
Councilmember Walton.
Aye.
Councilmember Musgrove.
Aye.
And Mayor Jones, I'm also aye. Thank you very much. Motion passes unanimously. We will be moving on to oral communications on an item not on the agenda. We don't have any this evening. So we will be moving to our first public hearing, which is item number 14, which is Resolution 2022-9D50, Confirming the Diagram and Assessment and Providing for the Levy of Annual Assessment of Landscaping and Lighting District Number One for Fiscal Year 2022-23. Staff, do we have a presentation on that this evening?
Madam Mayor, a very brief presentation. This is the original assessment district. It was formed in 1981, I believe. And this is the one that's slowly shrinking in size as properties redevelop, they annex out of this into the newer ones. This one does not cause, have a cost and escalator. So it's the same assessment year after year after year, and it's an annual item. So there's no change in the assessment for this item.
Okay. Do we have any questions from council? This is a public hearing, so do I have a motion to close the public hearing? Second. A motion and a second. I'm going through the roll call. Deputy Mayor Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Nunez.
Aye.
Councilmember Walton.
Aye.
Councilmember Musgrove.
Aye.
And Mayor Jones, I'm also aye. Thank you. Moving on to item number 15, which is the Resolution 20, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
We do approve.
Second. All in, okay, we have motion and a second, all in favor? Deputy Mayor Jenkins? Sorry, this is the first time we've done it this way in person. It seems so awkward. Deputy Mayor Jenkins? Councilmember Nunez?
Aye.
Councilmember Walton?
Aye.
Councilmember Musgrove?
Aye.
Mayor Jones, also aye. Motion passes. Moving on to the next item, item number 15, 2022-9D51, Confirming the Diagram and Assessment and Providing for the Levy of the Annual Assessment of Vallecitos Town Centers Street Maintenance District for Fiscal Year 2022-23. Do we have a brief staff presentation on that?
Equally brief presentation on this one. This is also an annual item. This one involves areas around the Nordall Shopping Center, so the Costco and that area out there. And it's street improvements, landscape improvements. This one actually does have a cost of living escalator. So the assessment varies from year to year. And like I said, this is an annual item, comes for the council.
Okay. This is a public hearing, so do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Deputy Mayor Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilmember Nunez?
Aye.
Councilmember Walton?
Aye.
Councilmember Musgrove?
Aye.
Mayor Jones, I'm also aye. That closes a public hearing. Any further discussion? Do I have a motion to approve the item?
We do approve.
Second. Okay, motion and a second. Let's go through the roll call. Deputy Mayor Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilmember Nunez?
Aye.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Councilmember Walton?
Aye.
Councilmember Musgrove?
Aye.
And Mayor Jones, also aye. So that passes unanimously as well. The reason I was trying to get through that quickly is we want everyone to have a chance to speak. So I am going to, oh, sorry. Oh. I do have one oral comment that I wasn't aware of. My apologies. On item number 16, so we will have to bring that back. Oh, I'm sorry. Wait, no, 16, that's our next item. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so it's the incorrect number. So that would be on which item? Public comment. Okay, so we're going to do a quick public comment. My apologies. Okay, the number, it threw me off a little bit. So we have one public comment, and that's going to be Julie Widman, regarding ADA accessibility. Welcome.
Thank you. Sorry to throw you off.
No, it's okay. We're working through the kinks this evening. It's no problem.
Thanks. Julie Widman, a long-term resident of San Marcos. And I've been to the board, the committee before, speaking about access for people with disabilities in San Marcos. And I'm speaking for my daughter, who is an adult with disabilities, lives here in San Marcos and has lived here for many years, except for when she went off to college. And she has a number of disabilities and is difficult to understand. And with COVID, she asked me if I could come and speak about this. She wanted me to convey the hope that access for people with disabilities is based in San Marcos on the letter, not on the letter of the law or restrictive interpretations, but on the spirit of the laws with access to, in particular with, well, things that affect people with disabilities, which frankly is everything that affects everyone else. And then, you know, housing and sidewalks and accessibility to lots of different things. And we understand that there is an ADA compliance survey that's been happening here in San Marcos and that there's some kind of a transition plan. I haven't heard a whole lot about this. But when I went on to report an area where it didn't have curb cuts, I saw a survey about ADA compliance. So I'm interested in hearing more about that in the future and maybe contacting with someone who has more information about that. So the areas that are in particular important to people with disabilities are, particularly if you're a wheelchair user, single-story housing. We have a lot of things going on here in San Marcos, and I've been talking about it for quite some time. Due to COVID, and we did the housing element while everyone was, not everyone was off from COVID, but frankly, I was. And however, there was a small little piece put in there. I was so proud that someone of the council or city or somewhere heard that, you know, making homes accessible for people with disabilities. And it said they should be a certain number, percentage, and/or that they would be easily modifiable. So easily modifiable is a little bit of a difficult area because what's easily modifiable in a three-story home for a person with a wheelchair is not an easy modification that you're going to make. So that's one area that's difficult. And we'd like to put out there for future housing. And also sidewalks and landscape. It's important to her anyway. She uses a very large wheelchair. And to have wide sidewalks and landscape strips between the cars and the sidewalks are not only safe and more comfortable for her, but for other people as well, which is the concept of universal design where you provide something that is helpful to people with disabilities, and it doesn't harm people without disabilities. And it may be helpful to them as well. Curb cuts has been a real big one of those. And the concept that cities can do more than what the laws require. They just can't do less than what the laws require. So one of the big messages, obviously, is sidewalks, sidewalks, sidewalks. And also, if they're having a, this transition, ADA compliance transition survey, or even if not, we would recommend that there be an advisory committee for, by, and for people with disabilities in San Marcos, if we don't have it already. Understand that there was a group called DAC. The person at the city didn't know what that stood for. But if it's disability advisory committee, which the state has one, there are a number of places that have one. But we should have one, we think, in San Marcos. And then you can hear from them directly and not from me. You, we also think that there should be a report compiled on what the accessible housing is in San Marcos, what's available. And I think that's the end of my time. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much, Julie. If you would please leave all of your contact information with staff, we will definitely have city staff reach out to you and talk to you. And thank you for coming on your daughter's behalf. I appreciate it. Okay. All right. So next, we will be moving on to item number 16, The University District Specific Plan, Proposed Specific Plan Amendments to University District Specific Plan and Heart of the City Specific Plan, General Plan Amendment, Tentative Subdivision Map, and Site Development Plan to amend the University District Specific Plan and allow mixed-use development. Okay, I believe that staff has a presentation on this. And Mr. Faraci, is that going to be you this evening?
It will not be me personally.
Okay.
So thank you, Mayor Jones, and council members. Tonight's presentation will be made by Art Pignone, as well as Stephanie Koller.
Thank you, Mayor Jones, members of the City Council. As indicated, the applicant is requesting an amendment to the University District Specific Plan, an amendment to the Heart of the City Specific Plan, a general plan amendment, and site development plan, and tentative subdivision map for a mixed-use development. The university district is located south of State Route 78, north of Barham Drive, and overlaps Tonox Valley Road to the east and west. Specific plan was adopted in 2009 to create a vibrant, urban, pedestrian-friendly downtown centrally located within the city and adjacent to Calci at San Marcos. From time to time, as market trends and architectural design progresses, amendments to the specific plan may be necessary to ensure the long-term viability of the plan. Since the plan's adoption in 2009, the document was formally amended in 2014 and has been administratively amended on five other occasions. With this proposal, the applicant's requesting to increase the allowed building height, remove a planned State Route 78 flyover bridge, remove a planned pedestrian bridge at Discovery Street, revise design standards, expand the specific plan area boundary, revise land use intensities, and refine the affordable housing requirements. For building height, the current specific plan generally limits buildings to seven stories and up to 90 feet in height. The proposed amendment would allow up to 16 stories and 185 feet in certain areas, while other areas will be increased to 12 and 15 stories in height. Areas here in red are proposed to contain buildings up to 16 stories in height. The area in purple is proposed to contain buildings up to 15 stories in height. The area in purple is proposed to contain buildings up to 15 stories in height. And the areas in pink are proposed to have buildings up to 12 stories in height.
I have a quick question, Art. On the second slide, I think it was, I don't know, yeah, I think it's the second slide, where it says, land use intensity revisions. Could you explain that? Because when I hear intensity, I know there's been a lot of discussion in the community that intensity means more people coming in? And so could you please explain that, the intensity?
Yeah, I could explain it. I have some slides that will go through that as well.
Perfect.
If you wanna wait, or...
Yeah, no, that's fine. Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure thing. My mouse is acting a little funny right now. The proposed specific plan boundary expansion will include two parcels located east of the Sprinter rail line. Both properties will be included into the office commercial district of the specific plan, which permits a mix of uses, including commercial, office, and residential. This table summarizes the proposed land use density revisions. As highlighted here in yellow, the number of residential units within the area will remain the same, so there will not be an increase in residential units. Hotel rooms, medical office space, and retail space are proposed to be reduced, and general office space and parks and open space are proposed to be increased. In a moment, the applicant will give a presentation and explain how the proposed taller buildings are linked to that increase in open space. The State Route 78 flyover bridge is proposed to be removed from the plan and will be covered in the traffic portion of this report. The pedestrian bridge at Discovery Street is also proposed to be removed. Justification for the removal is that enhanced crosswalks are more easily accessible, provide a traffic calming benefit, utilize less land, and are more cost-effective. The amendment also provides structure to ensure affordable housing units get built. Currently, this specific plan contains a policy that requires at least 15% of all housing within the district be affordable for low and moderate income households. However, the specific plan currently does not contain thresholds for when those affordable units are to be built. So here's an opportunity to clean that up. Therefore, the project will include the following, the specific plan will include the following thresholds. At completion of the 1,475th residential unit, no less than 130 affordable units must be built. At the 2,000th unit, no less than 300 affordable units must be built. And following completion of the 2,000th residential unit, all future projects containing residential units must make at least 15% of the units affordable. Other revisions to the specific plan include the conversion of mid-city lane into a pedestrian plaza, modifying development standards to allow for more flexibility and architectural variation, including a minor deviation process, and general cleanup and modifications to correspond with the city's current terminology and nomenclature. In analyzing building height, the University District has always been envisioned to contain taller, denser urban development within the city. The current specific plan allows buildings up to 90 feet and seven stories in height, pretty similar to the development that you see out there now with the extended learning building and those surrounding developments. And increasing the height requirements will change the appearance of the area from what was originally envisioned. To show what increased building heights would look like, photo simulations were prepared comparing current height regulations versus proposed regulations. The views were selected because they are public, highly-travelled street intersections, where viewers have a direct pause view of the project area. These views were also used as key viewpoints in developing the city's ridgeline protection overlay zone, which was adopted to protect the appearance of hillsides within the city. And it should be noted that the project area is not located within the ridgeline protection overlay zone, so it's not subject to the ridgeline protection standards. However, the views of the ridgelines were analyzed as part of this analysis. Beginning with views from the south, here's a view from Tonox Valley Road and Campus Marketplace looking north that shows what buildings would look like under the current height standards. As shown, buildings would project above the horizon, creating a low, uniform urban skyline, and the hillsides in the background are not visible, so they'll be covered up by the buildings that are allowed to be there. Here's the same view showing what buildings would look like under the proposed height standards. Buildings would project above the horizon with taller, narrower silhouettes with less uniformity in height, creating a more articulated skyline, and the hillsides in the background would continue to not be visible. Here's a view from Tonox Valley Road and Craven Road under the current height standards. Like the first photo, the simulation depicts a low, uniform skyline, however, right over here, above Tonox Valley Road, you can see the San Marcos Mountains there in the background. And under the proposed height standards, buildings are taller and provide that articulation, but you could still see the San Marcos Mountains here in the background above Tonox Valley Road. Switching to the north end of the specific plan area, here's a view looking south from Tonox Valley Road and State Route 78. This view depicts what the area would look like under the current building height standards, with views of the ridgelines to the south preserved. And under the proposed height standards, the skyline contains the taller buildings we've been talking about, with your articulated skyline. The taller buildings do punctuate beyond the height of the ridgelines from this location, however, the ridgeline is still visible in between the buildings. Moving further north, here's a view from Tonox Valley Road and Mission Road. The photo depicts what the site looks like under the current building height standards, with the ridgelines visible and uninterrupted. And under the proposed height regulations, the buildings are more visible, however, the ridgelines continue to be uninterrupted from this location. In addition to photo simulations, the city analyzed pad grades of the University District with pad grades of surrounding development. As shown in this exhibit, the University District sits at the bottom of the valley, while buildings at Cal State San Marcos are at a higher elevation. This red dashed line here, and also in the bottom part of the screen, this represents the top of the Markstein Hall Building at Cal State San Marcos, which demonstrates that the buildings will appear to be taller at Cal State than a 16-story building within the University District Specific Plan area. And here's an angle to show what that kind of looks like. What this does is allow the taller buildings to visually blend in with the backdrop of Cal State San Marcos, when viewing the site from the north at this location. Next, we'll discuss traffic and removal of the State Route 78 flyover bridge. The city's principal civil engineer, Stephanie Keller, will present the analysis.
Yes, thanks, Art. To assess the potential for traffic impacts, a local transportation analysis was prepared. And the LTA considers the vehicle miles traveled metric as well as the level of service, so we'll talk about each of those in turn. Next, please. As you all know, with VMT, we analyze how many miles a person is likely to travel, based upon their home or their work location, and then the transportation network around that location. So areas that are walkable, or bikeable, or transit-accessible, they perform very well under the VMT standard. And so we can see that the proposed specific plan amendment performs well, as far as VMT is concerned. After implementing the increase in job density strategy, both VMT per resident and per employee decreases below the levels in the base year and in the existing approved specific plan. So the proposed specific plan amendment has no significant impacts for VMT, and in fact, it improves VMT from the existing approved specific plan. Next, please. Now, let's turn to the level of service component. Level of service focuses on vehicular delay and roadway capacity, and it relies upon a project's trip generation. And with this amendment, trip generation is significantly decreased. With fewer hotel rooms and medical office space in mixed-use areas, as Art was talking about, the trip generation has decreased by about 46% from the currently approved 2014 specific plan, and by about 56% from what was studied in the 2009 EIR. So while the mitigation measures, which were implemented under the 2009 EIR, contemplated about 134,000 trips per day, the currently approved specific plan will generate only about 109,000 trips. And if this amendment is approved, it would reduce the number of vehicular trips even further, down to about 58,500. Next, please. So the surrounding projects are also generating fewer trips. We just covered the University District area specifically, and that's producing about 76,000 fewer daily trips than what the 2009 EIR assessed. But Fenton Scripps is generating 35,000 fewer trips, and Kaiser 17,000 fewer. Creekside District, 73,000 fewer trips. So altogether, over 200,000 fewer trips are being generated compared to what the 2009 EIR studied and assessed. So less than half of the traffic modeled in 2009 will actually be realized. Next, please. With that 56% reduction in trip generation, the amendment causes no new significant impacts from a level of service perspective. Therefore, no mitigation beyond what was identified in the 2009 EIR is required, and in fact, mitigation measures from the transportation and circulation element of the specific plan can actually be removed. For instance, a mitigation measure in the EIR required a flyover bridge at Johnston Lane, and Art touched on this earlier. The amendment proposes to remove that because it isn't needed anymore. Next. And here's the wording of that mitigation measure for the construction of the Johnston Lane flyover. Currently, the EIR requires that the bridge be constructed before issuance of a building permit, triggering 2,855 PM peak trips. The tricky part about this mitigation measure is that there's no funding or cost-share mechanism identified, and so it's likely that a project would attempt to scale to remain below the threshold, leaving the next project to come in responsible for the whole construction of the bridge. And then here's a map of the bridge location, shown in yellow there. It's in the vicinity of the recently completed Bent Avenue Bridge and the planned Grand Avenue Bridge. The EIR proposed this bridge as a connection to San Marcos Boulevard to offset the traffic impacts that were forecast back in 2009. And we've discussed that those traffic impacts are not going to materialize now because of the 200,000 daily trip reduction from the project site and from surrounding areas. We're also seeing a decrease in traffic on San Marcos Boulevard, where the bridge would connect. Pre-COVID counts on San Marcos Boulevard west of Grand Avenue, conducted in 2019, showed that the daily traffic volume was 4,600 cars less than it was in 2009. And in addition, because of the lower trip generation that we've been talking about, and the shift in trips from San Marcos Boulevard to the new Discovery Street connection, traffic volumes on San Marcos Boulevard will not increase with the project, and they will actually modestly decrease with the proposed amendment. If the specific plan amendment is not approved, the future volumes on San Marcos Boulevard will likely be slightly higher than they are today in the future. Next. This is another graphic showing a high-level alignment study conducted by the city in 2010. Johnston Lane is shown in teal aqua there at the top of the screen, and you can see in orange the 11 homes that would be removed with this proposed bridge. Again, this is only a concept, but any design to bring a bridge into this area would need to contemplate the removal of those homes, and coordination with Caltrans, as well as coordination with the resource agencies. The 2009 EIR traffic study projected close to 29,000 vehicles daily on this bridge, but now those 29,000 vehicles are easily accommodated on the road network without the bridge, because we've got that 200,000 decrease in trips. So the 29,000 is just a small fraction of that. Next. In summary, the challenges to bridge construction include funding for the structure, given that there's no fair share contribution required of the properties in the vicinity, and there's no funding mechanism identified; the necessary acquisition of the Johnston Lane residences, which would need to be demolished; required Caltrans approvals, and then potential environmental impacts on the creek, including updates to the EIR analysis performed in 2009, and coordination with the resource agencies. And that's it for me. I'll turn it back to you, Art.
I had a quick question on that, Stephanie. So I did notice on the map that you provided that it looks like the Johnson Lane, I mean, there are a lot of houses there, but that area just right there between the houses and the 78, that's all sensitive habitat area, is it not?
I believe that it is, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Because I think even, because that's right around where the channel, the channelization, being that we don't have huge box culverts under the 78, I think it actually comes out that way, or right around that area, when it comes down San Marcos Boulevard in a 100-year flood plain? Is that, or 100-year flood? Is that correct?
I can't confirm that. That sounds accurate.
Somewhere in that area.
Somewhere in that area, and there is significant habitat here, and that's why the resource agencies would need to be involved. And then the EIR that originally contemplated this was done in 2009, so significant updates would need to be done to make sure that we're addressing the environmental factors today.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Stephanie, can you give us a reader's digest on the VMTs? What they mean, why they're important to us, and why we have to abide by them?
Sure, sure. You know, up until relatively recently, we've been looking at that level of service metric. So that's kind of the realm that we're all comfortable in, that we've been talking about a lot. And level of service is looking at delays and impacts on our road network, you know, whether it's an A, B, C, or D grade. VMT is different. VMT is looking at the total trip generation from a site, the length of the trips, and the number of the trips, and then dividing that by the total number of residents or employees to get essentially a per capita number. And so it's not looking, the end result isn't looking at all of the trips generated, it's breaking it down to that per capita, so that that metric can be compared against regional averages to say, okay, this is an area where VMT per resident or per employee is lower than, say, this area over here. For instance, a downtown, an urban area like this is going to have a lower VMT per capita and per employee than an area way out in the remote portions of the county. And that means that every person driving to that county site, either for work or to live there, they are, they are driving many more miles on a daily basis, and therefore having a greater environmental impact and a greater impact on our infrastructure. So our new metric is VMT, and we're comparing that to regional averages, and in this case, we're also comparing it to the currently approved plan, to make sure that this new scenario we're proposing doesn't increase VMT at all. And we're also comparing it to a base year. And in this case, the proposed amendment reduces VMT both from a per resident perspective and from a per employee perspective, to below both of those metrics, below the base year and below the currently approved plan. And so that's our, that's our new SEQA metric for traffic impacts, is are we triggering an impact in VMT? And here we are not.
And the standards are set by the state? Or the county?
The standard is set by the state, yes.
And we have to meet those standards, is that correct?
We are required to meet those standards. That's our standard for determining whether there's a SEQA impact, and if an impact occurs, then there are tools available to each project to try to reduce VMT by employing measures onsite or in the vicinity that would reduce those trips, like, well, I won't go into details.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have something? Deputy Mayor?
I have a question. Nope.
Deputy Mayor's gonna go first, and then we'll come over to you, council member. Thank you. Sorry, I didn't have your picture on there, so I couldn't see you waving at me.
Stephanie, question. You've talked about the Johnston Bridge. Are you discussing anywhere in here about the Discovery Pedestrian Bridge?
I did not cover that in the traffic portion of the presentation. I believe Art is covering that.
At a future slide?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure. Thanks.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
And council member, Walton?
Thank you. Stephanie, did I hear you say that there is, there's fewer cars, the traffic's decreased from 2009 study to pre-COVID studies on San Marcos Boulevard west of Grand Avenue?
That's right. There were, there were counts done for the EIR in 2009, and then counts prior to COVID in 2019 along San Marcos Boulevard, west of Grand. And the latter numbers represented a decrease of about 4,600 cars per day. So there's, there's actually a...
It seems hard, that seems hard to believe that in 10 years, from '09 to '19, that traffic would actually decrease at that place. What might be an explanation for that?
Bob, would you mind?
I think we have the consultant.
I'm asking, excuse me, council member, I'm asking if the developer's consultant would like to speak to that.
And when you come up to the, to the podium, could you please let us know your name for the record? the record?
Yes, this is actually the city's consultant, Bob Davis, will speak to it. Bob, thank you.
Bob Davis with Michael Baker. The question that you asked is probably related to improvements to the regional network because the way San Marcos Boulevard is situated, it does handle a lot of inter-regional traffic from one city to another. And so as the freeways are being improved, the need to use a surface street to make that trip becomes less necessary.
Okay. This is, we're just speculating at the moment, then there's no, we don't really know how that could happen?
No. But it does seem to be a fairly steady, over that period of time, the volumes just have an increase on San Marcos Boulevard.
Okay. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
I have one more question for you, Stephanie, just for clarification for those listening. When we get these numbers, we get them from the developer, and then we research to make sure those numbers are accurate, correct? So there's a process of confirming what they give us is correct.
There's a process of...
Can you explain that?
Yes, there is a process of confirming what they give us is correct. Most of the information that we're talking about is actually generated through models run by Sandag, so run by another agency, an independent third party, and they're modeling the traffic on the street network with the project, without the project, and looking at it holistically. So that's where a lot of this information is coming from. The information that is provided to us from the developer's team and the developer's traffic engineer is reviewed both by in-house staff to be verified, and in this case, also reviewed by Mr. Bob Davis, the city's third-party consultant, who is also a registered traffic engineer. So there are several checks in there.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, moving on.
Thank you, Stephanie. In addition to the proposed amendments, the applicant is proposing a site development plan and a tentative subdivision map for a mixed-use development. The development is being proposed in three phases. Phase A located at the northwest corner of Campus Way and North City Drive; Phase B at the southwest corner of Campus Way and Carmel Street; and Phase C at the northwest corner of June Way and Campus Way. No development's currently proposed for Phase C. This area will require separate site development plan approval in the future. Here's a site plan for Phase A. The project consists of a 12-story building containing ground floor commercial space, 484 apartments, and a subterranean parking garage. Access to the parking garage will be provided from Campus Way and from a ramp at the termination of June Way. The north end of Phase A contains a pedestrian plaza where Mid-City Lane is proposed to be removed from the specific plan as part of the specific plan amendment. This pedestrian plaza will serve as additional public open space for the area, as well as a continuance of the existing pedestrian plaza east of Campus Way, separating Block C and Block K. The architectural style of the building is contemporary with the combination of pre-finished concrete, colored metal panels, glass, and glazing. The second floor of the building contains an outdoor deck with residential amenities such as a pool, spa, landscaped areas, and a clubhouse. Here's a view from the north. Above the second floor, the building separates into two symmetrical towers with a view corridor in between. Portions of each tower step back above the eighth floor, reducing the bulk and mass of the building and adding visual interest. Phase B of the development is located north of Phase A. The southern portion of Phase B contains a five-story mixed-use building with 73 apartments, ground floor commercial space, and a four-level parking structure. The northern portion of Phase B contains a four-story commercial building containing 25,000 square feet of ground floor commercial space with three levels of office space on the upper floors. Access to the parking garage will be provided from Campus Way and Carmel Street. The architectural style of both buildings is contemporary with the use of glass, cement, plaster, stucco, and a flat roof. Separating the buildings will be an outdoor plaza, and on the upper floors will be connected with sky bridges in this area. And here's a rendering of what Phase B will look like from Carmel Street and Campus Way. In compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act, an environmental impact report was certified in 2009 for the University District specific plan. In compliance with Section 15164 of the State SEQA Guidelines, an addendum to the previously certified EIR was prepared for this project. The addendum analyzed all potential environmental impacts associated with the project, and it was determined that none of the conditions calling for preparation of a subsequent EIR have occurred. Therefore, the final EIR for the University District adequately addresses the impacts of the project. For public outreach, the city went beyond the required 500-foot public notice radius and sent out 7,961 public notice letters for the project. From these notices, the city received 30 written public comments consisting of 12 letters of support, 11 letters of opposition, and seven letters seeking additional information about the project. On November 8, 2021, the city held a public workshop to gather public input, and approximately 60 individuals attended the meeting. The city also set up an informational webpage for the project, providing general information, links to plans, and FAQs. The applicant also conducted their own public outreach, which included booths at numerous winter markets at North City and public workshops held on February 28 and March 28, 2022, also within North City. The applicant will discuss their public outreach efforts in further detail in their presentation. Collectively, opposing comments included concerns with building heights, traffic congestion, removal of the pedestrian bridge, removal of the Johnson Lane State Route 78 bridge, lighting, and fire access. In response to these comments, all concerns have been addressed in the analysis and EIR addendum. For building height, the analysis concluded that while increased building heights will create a more visible urban skyline, visibility of the skyline is not anticipated to degrade the visual quality of the city or have a significant visual impact to the city's protected aesthetic resources. For traffic, as you heard from Stephanie, the traffic study confirms that the State Route 78 flyover bridge is no longer needed since the project will generate less traffic than what was analyzed in 2009. The pedestrian bridge at Discovery Street is substantiated since installing enhanced crosswalks as opposed to a pedestrian bridge will just as effectively move pedestrians south of Discovery Street, provides a traffic calming benefit, utilizes less land, and is also a more cost-effective means to move pedestrians. Impacts to schools were analyzed as part of the original specific plan adoption, and no new impacts are anticipated since the number of residential units will not increase. And as development occurs within the project area, projects will be required to pay the applicable statutory school fees. For lighting, the project will adhere to the lighting standards of the University District specific plan, which requires the downward lighting. Additionally, the project area is located within an urbanized area of the city that already contains nighttime lighting. Therefore, the project is not anticipated to create any new lighting impacts. And from a safety standpoint, the project was reviewed by the city's fire department, and it was determined that the city had sufficient resources to serve the project, as well as any future projects with the proposed building heights. On June 6, 2022, the planning commission held a public hearing and voted to recommend approval of the project to city council. The University District specific plan amendment and site development plan were approved by a five-to-one vote, and the Heart of the City specific plan amendment, general plan amendment, and tentative subdivision map were approved by a six-to-zero vote. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of the proposed specific plan amendments, general plan amendment, tentative subdivision map, and a site development plan. The applicant will now give a presentation of their own. This concludes staff presentation. We also wanted to note that we did receive a letter earlier today, an opposition letter regarding the EIR addendum that was prepared for the project, and the applicant, as well as the SEQA consultant, are available to answer any questions based on that letter. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Art. Okay, so University District San Marcos, North City. I hate calling it that. It's confusing.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Jones, Deputy Mayor Jenkins, members of the city council, city staff, and members of the community. My name is Gary Levitt, and our company, Seabreeze Properties, has been investing in our community since 2004. Tonight is about decisions impacting the future of the city. It is about what the small portion of San Marcos can be tomorrow. And by tomorrow, we do not mean next year, or even in five of 10 years. We're talking about the 60, 70, 80 years. Real estate, when done properly, is forever. Tonight is about allowing for the continued evolution of a neighborhood, the seeds of which were planted when the Heart of the City specific plan was adopted by your predecessors in 1988. This adoption at that time allowed the CSU system to commit to building a campus here in San Marcos. What our city leaders did over 30 years ago when they attracted CSUSM is that they transformed San Marcos forever, elevating it above its neighboring cities to a place that today has undeniably become the education capital of North County San Diego. Additionally, both Kaiser and Scripps Health Systems have made or will soon be making significant additional investments adjacent to CSUSM. CSUSM has served as a catalyst for growth, increase in employment, business opportunities in the community and in the entire region. Yet, this is just the beginning and represents only a small part of the ultimate potential unleashed with the 1988 heart of San Marcos approval. In recognition of this potential 13 years ago, in 2009, the University District specific plan was approved by the city council, creating the rights to build a dense urban node with thousands of homes and over 2 million square feet of retail and office space right in the center of the Heart of the City specific plan area. With the university and Kaiser Hospital campuses to its south, the freeway to the north, Sprint Rail to the east, and San Marcos Creek to the west, it was and still is a place that allowed our city planners to think differently about what could happen here. This place, now known as North City, was conceived from the outset to be an urban place within a suburban city. What we have built to date has proven this vision to be correct. Today, we have a place members of the community enjoy visiting, a place where residents love living, a place where they like working, and for a lucky few, living and working. And this is because of its walkable streets, outdoor restaurants, dynamic architecture, public plazas, peseos, and its urban-style homes and offices. But as times have changed since 2009, and with the proof of concept now proven, we have come before you, we come before you tonight to join hands with the city in pursuing the ultimate potential of this specific plan. It is now critical that we, as the applicants, and the city as the controlling body, work together at every opportunity to ensure that we deliver the full potential of the opportunity we have before us. This potential is to ensure that we create synergy between CSUSM and North City so that young people, when they're visiting the campus and they drive off the freeway for the first time, they can see and smell the potential in front of them and are inspired to attend CSUSM. And thereby, we help the campus attract the best and the brightest students from our community and from the entire region and beyond. A place that when potential new faculty visit the campus for the first time, they are inspired by this potential and choose our community to work and live in so that CSUSM can attract and keep world-class faculty to teach these students. A place where the opportunities are so obvious that the technology and biotech firms that are locating and growing within this region choose to locate their offices and campuses here because they need this great talent working for them, and this talent desires to live always in dynamic places and the place where the university creates courses and degrees that meet these companies' specific needs. This is the place that, together with you, we have the opportunity to create different housing solutions rather than in today's environment, so that they're alternative choices rather than just the suburban choices that we have today. This will enable empty-nesters, retirees, and people with and without children to be able to choose a place where they aren't dependent on their car for every small errand, a place where they can look out the window with a view, a place where they see their neighbors and friends every day at the coffee shops and restaurants, a place where they can sit in public plazas and enjoy music and culture and just watch other people, a place for the community to gather, street fairs, farmers' markets, art shows, sporting events. That is what brings us here tonight. We are before you because we need to improve on the entitlements you approved in 2009, and this improvement is simple. We're not asking for more buildings, homes, shops, et cetera. The quantity we already have rights to build are there today. What we need is height flexibility. And the reason for this flexibility are really three or four. One is the public spaces. With taller buildings, less of our land will be covered with buildings, giving us the opportunity to create better and larger public spaces, which at the end of the day is where all the magic happens. We will be able to attract better restaurants, retailers, and office tenants to serve in this community. Attracting top employers. Many of the technology and biotech companies seeking to expand their presence in San Diego today are seeking multiple buildings in a secure campus environment. And these would be, in North City, the adjacent great dining options, public places, with a variety of housing choices for their employees. But the problem is that these sort of buildings use up a lot of land. And when we allocate a lot of land to these sort of campuses, we simply will not be able to fit the quantity of homes we are entitled to build unless we can build taller. So that brings us to the taller buildings, which will offer flexibility in housing, not available in the community today, expanding choices. And with this height, we are able to plan to deliver on all the units we are entitled to build while also attracting those employers. Due to the housing crisis before all of us, it's important that together we should be doing everything we can to deliver on all of these units. And finally, the construction types. We are extremely committed to the long-term success of this development and this city and North City. As mentioned before, we look at this project with a 50-plus-year time horizon. And with that outlook, we need to build with higher-quality materials such as concrete and steel. And to efficiently build in that manner, we need the height and the benefits which allows for more creative architecture, solutions, public spaces, et cetera. These are the things the community deserves. These four factors became obvious and important enough to us over the last few years that we elected to go through what has been a long and detailed process with staff and the community. And here we are tonight, asking for your approval. This will help us develop a great place that meets and exceeds its potential, a place that people aspire to live and work in, a place that people go out of their way to meet their friends and neighbors in and at, a place that adds value to its community, a place that adds value to its neighbors. Darren will now fill in the details. Thank you.
I'll be as quick as I possibly can. I know there's quite a few folks here who would like to have a few words. So Darren Levitt, also with Seabreeze Properties. So just as a refresher, as Gary mentioned, we've been investing in this community since 2004. You know, back in the day, the Heart of the City specific plan identified this location more as a business district rather than what is now a mixed-use downtown urban core. And we began a process in 2007, 2008, ultimately in 2009, where we went through community workshops, we went through task force meetings, and ultimately, we went through a process much longer and detailed than the one we've most recently been through to achieve the ultimate approval in 2009 of the University District specific plan. Specifically, in 2009, we achieved the entitlements of 3,400 residential units, a million square feet of strip commercial retail space, 450 hotel rooms, 300,000 square feet of medical office, and 640,000 square feet of commercial office. And times have clearly changed since then. No longer is this project going to be a big-box anchored retail center similar to some of the likes of retailers that you can find today down San Marcos Boulevard. And so we are here before you to upgrade and really bring the specific plan up to the needs and meets of creating a place in our community today. We have a few core values that we've held strong to all along. So authenticity, we need to make sure that this is a one-of-one type place. No other community or city can boast what we have created thus far, and I think with the small tidbit that we've created to date, that is coming true. It needs to be vibrant, have a variety of different places, a variety of different experiential places to meet your friends and neighbors and run into folks. It needs to be ultimately walkable. We cannot continue to build the typical Southern California retail centers where there's a large parking lot, surface parked with buildings around the outsides. We need to dedicate most of our land to the pedestrian themselves. And sustainability, something that we hold near and dear to our hearts, and we'll talk a bit more about it as we move forward. We've built nine buildings to date. I'll flip right through them. So there's the quad, this is student housing, it was completed in two phases, 2013, 2015, some 25,000 square feet of ground floor retail space. It's affiliated with the university, so everybody upstairs is a student at Cal State San Marcos. This is Block C, it was completed in 2016, it's market-rate housing, about 266 units, also completed in two phases, separated by the paseo, which we'll come back to in a bit. This is the extended learning This is the Extended Learning Building. This was a P-three project in conjunction with the university and the city. It was the first P-three project completed in the CSU system for an academic building. It has a pedestrian bridge that connects the second floor podium deck two campus, a rendering of which you see there. To the left of that bridge and in the bottom right corner, you can see a real-life picture of the new student housing building that is going up right now on Barham, also affiliated with Cal State San Marcos. This is the Urge Common House, many folks may remember that name, and the new and improved, much improved Draft Republic. This is an entertainment-type place, again, a one-of-one type facility, a brewery, bowling alley, four-hundred-seat restaurant, outdoor dining. I mean, you can't find something like this really anywhere else in the region. Mesa Rim Climbing Gym, again, another very unique use adjacent to Draft Republic. If you're looking out that window where that gentleman is climbing, you can actually see down into the patio of Draft Republic. So the adjacency of all these different uses creates this vibrancy that you really can't find in many other places around. And then Pima Medical Institute and Scripps Health, a medical office building on the highway. But this is really what it's all about. It's not about these individualized buildings, it's about how they all relate to one another. We are committed to building each individual building one by one, but each one needs to add value to the last and needs to add value to the entire community at large, which is different for master plan communities where you may have a variety of different ownership groups who are building one-off buildings and they're competing with their next-door neighbor. The benefit we have here is that we can incrementally and intelligently plan the entitlements that we have a responsibility to the city to utilize in the most efficient manner and create places for the community to engage. You know, our company, we're a small company, we're locally based, we're North County-based, we have two projects in this county, mixed-use development where we are adding value to the cities that we are involved with is all we do. We're not a huge institution, we did not hire some suave consultant to come up and speak to you tonight. We are here ourselves, which I think is really hard to find when it comes to real estate development these days. We won a couple of awards, probably most notably the Economic Development Award we won conjunkly with the city where we successfully created a dynamic urban environment that has a plethora of benefits to the surrounding communities. Our tenants, this is really where, you know, this is really where we get proud. None of our retail tenants today are large corporate restaurants or retailers. Every one of them, for the most part, are either family-owned or mom and pop. Two of them are based here in San Marcos, born and bred here in San Marcos. They need special shout-outs. Umami Japanese, David Sasuga, a longtime San Marcos resident and business owner, you know, he wanted an opportunity to showcase his cuisine and expertise in dining and he created Umami. And I think that if you've been there, you know there's something magical about that place. And then Winston's Ice Cream, many folks here tonight may have already been there. I'd like to mention that today we got our final approval or final certificate of occupancy on Winston's new home, which is right across the street from where they are right now. So they're in a hundred square feet in Union Co-op and they're expanding into a thousand square feet right across the street inside of Block C. So it's a really unique story that you can't find in these larger strip centers. The San Marcos Chamber of Commerce, they were the very first member at Union Co-op and they have been such a great partner to us and to the city and have brought quite a vibrancy to the downtown that we are creating. And then the farmer's market, I just came from there, it was on earlier, it's every Tuesday. It struggled to find its home in San Marcos. It tried and failed a couple of different times at Restaurant Row and then again on campus, but it's thriving in North City and if you've been there, you know what I'm talking about. Sustainable development, I mentioned we'd come back to this. So to date, we had, it's from solar power. We have about twenty-four thousand square feet of PV panels that we've installed on seven of the nine buildings to date. That new student housing building will also have solar power. The new Block Two Phase A project that we're asking for approvals on tonight will also have solar power on the roof. And right now, we generate enough solar electricity to power about fifty percent of the residential units inside of Block C, which is something not a lot of other projects can boast. Smart parking, this is again, a very key element to mixed-use real estate, sharing parking spaces. Again, we can't continue to build around the car. We need to make sure that when we are building these parking spaces, they are utilized to the best of their ability. So Pebble, oh, thanks. Pebble, great. So this is a Google company, it was based, Google spun out a company called Sidewalk Labs, which is a technology company, born and bred just for the benefit of creating a better-built environment. And Pebble is one of these unique technologies that we are taking advantage of. So if you go into the Block C parking structure, you'll notice these little pebbles about an inch and a half on every single stall and they track in real time which parking spaces are occupied, which ones are not, how long they've been vacant, et cetera, et cetera. And I can pull up on my phone, that's a screenshot in the top right corner, of which parking spaces are being used at which time of day. And the reason why this is so critical to us is so that we can manage parking in an efficient manner going forward to ensure that we do have enough parking to meet the demands of all these various uses. But we can't continue, again, to build more parking than we ultimately need and dedicating land to the cars. Land is finite, we need to make sure we use it intelligently for the hundred-year vision that Gary mentioned. EV charging, we have eleven ports today inside of the Block C structure. We're finally reaching the point where there's enough demand of our residents and retail patrons to actually install more. So we're really excited about that. We'll talk more about it at the Phase A site development permit. Silva Cell Technology and probably our favorite thing that we did from a green standpoint is we uprooted this a hundred-year-old oak tree that was going to be cut down. It was when Twin Oaks Valley Road was being expanded and we opted to relocate it. It's really our trophy, it's sitting right in the heart of the project in the roundabout at Campus Way and North City Drive. So why are we here tonight? Again, a couple of reasons, height flexibility, Mid-City Lane, infrastructure updates, Carmel Street expansion and form-based code. Height flexibility, we saw in staff's presentation, this is a replication of that, we aren't asking for approval of a sixteen-story building tonight, okay? We are, approval is also not carte blanche approval for us to build height everywhere. We are asking for height in very specific locations located at the low point of the project, primarily around Twin Oaks and Barham and North City Drive. And when we do have a building of sixteen stories, we would have to go through a very detailed site development permit process. So the representations that were shown earlier on of four towers blocking, you know, views here and there, you know, those are extremely conceptual. They are not something that we are proposing tonight, but we are asking for the flexibility to incorporate height into our planning purposes for many of the reasons that Gary mentioned, primarily open space on the ground floor plane. So as staff showed this image earlier, the top represents a massing of what all of those entitlements that we are currently approved for today, if we were to lay them out in our existing height limit location, that's what you, we'd ultimately end up with. Buildings that are very close together take up a large swath of land and that's not what we think is the best use of these entitlements that we have to date. Something on the bottom is more in line and I think this graphic shows it better. On the left and on the right are the exact same amount of square footage, the exact same amount of people, the exact same amount of cars, the exact same amount of trips being generated, but quite simply, the project on the right-hand side is the project that we would be far more proud of creating and I think something that this city absolutely deserves. Community members that are here tonight that do not live in San, in North City, who do live in the surrounding neighborhoods, who are not going to be going upstairs into these buildings, a hundred percent of them are going to experience the ground floor plane if they come to this project. Also, a hundred percent of the people that do live, work and entertain at North City will experience that ground floor and we need to make sure that we can create the best possible ground floor place for these types of environments. You know, the ground floor, again, this is where culture happens, this is where the soul of a community is created. It's not in the Ralph's parking lot, it is in locations like this where you happen to run into a neighbor that you haven't seen in a while or a long-lost friend or somebody that you didn't even know lived in San Marcos and you, you know, grew up with them in high school and they moved off and now they're back with their family. These are the types of places that it's all about. And if you were at the farmer's market earlier, there's live music and there's vibrancy that you really are too few in our communities these days. From a visual standpoint, this representation shows relative to Kaiser. I think Kaiser is probably the most notable sky, building in today's skyline. So the top line, that's Marxine Hall on campus. Kaiser is the second line there. The building on the left, that's the Extended Learning Building, so far below. The twelve-story building that we are proposing tonight, that also sits, that's the middle building, that sits below that skyline, the Kaiser Light. And then a sixteen-story building effectively would be at about seven hundred and fifty-five, seven hundred and sixty feet above sea level, which is the exact same height as Kaiser, seven hundred and fifty-five feet above sea level. So we're also talking about setting these buildings further back into an urban mixed-use location, not adjacent to suburban homes, which Kaiser is. Mid-City Lane, turning that into a paseo, so this is an internal street. So from the internal traffic perspective, the removal of this street and turning it into a pedestrian-only paseo does not impact or, we can adequately flow the amount of trips and cars within the project without it. So we would like to create much more of a pedestrian-friendly location, similar to what we have between Block C North and South right now. Traffic, Stephanie touched on this earlier, so a significant reduction with these new entitlements that we're asking for today. On the left represents two thousand and nine, number of trips and on the far right represents what the approval tonight would represent in terms of average daily trips at full build-out of this project. So thirty-four hundred residential units, we're keeping that the same, three hundred and forty-five thousand square feet of retail space, a significant reduction, but still a significant number to create these types of places that we want to create. Reduction in hotel rooms, two hundred and fifty versus four fifty, we've studied that market quite significantly and just come to the conclusion that there's really not demand for as many hotel rooms right now. Commercial, medical office and again, another reduction because of Kaiser and Scripps in the neighborhood, there's not going to be as much demand to be in ours. And commercial office, as we touched on, we do believe that there is going to be significant interest in a high-wage-paying company becoming a part of this community, especially considering the adjacency to Cal State San Marcos. And all of that adds up to why that the removal of the Johnson Lane Bridge over the seventy-eight really, based on traffic, is unjustifiable at this point in time, not to mention again, the condemnation of the homes that are on Johnson Lane, the impacts on the creek, and the agencies that we need to be involved. From a pedestrian bridge standpoint, we've built the one that connects to Cal State San Marcos, we are keeping the one that connects the east and west sides of our pedestrian, of our project over Twin Oaks. But the removal of the pedestrian bridge over Discovery Street, so Discovery Street used to be designed as a six-lane road, it was going to have three lanes in each direction. It's now reduced to two lanes in each direction, so it's a lot closer of a distance. But in addition, Kaiser and the Fenton, Scripps, Shaylan, our project, Discovery Village South, were both projects approved without setting aside land for this pedestrian bridge to actually land on the south side of Discovery Street. So rather than this being us putting up our hand saying, hey, we don't want to build it, it's more of a correction based on decisions that have already been made by the city. The expansion into Campus Point, so this is a six-acre piece of land just on the east side of the Sprinter rail, it's extremely close to the Sprinter Station. It's been a blighted piece of property for many, many years, it's had a vacant home on it for quite some time. It just makes sense from an adjacency standpoint to incorporate it into the specific plan area. Updates to the form-based code, we've talked about a lot of these, this is more technical, but you know, for example, the building height regulation plan to reflect the increased height limits, street types to reflect the removal of Mid-City Lane, build two-line exceptions, so we want to be able to set the buildings further back away from the property line again to open up the public space so that we can build it, if we can build it taller, and so on and so forth. And I'd be happy to go through these in more detail if you'd like. Public outreach, we did the public workshop that the city hosted in November of last year, we hosted a couple of private workshops in February and March, we hosted a booth at the San Marcos Winter Market, we were at the San Marcos Farmer's Market in May a couple of times, we did a presentation to existing residents and tenants, I recorded a podcast of the Chamber of Commerce, San Marcos Chamber of Commerce in February, there's an article posted by Coast News Group in March and again, another one by the Union Tribune in April. And I think by attendance tonight, words gotten out. Site development permit, so again, this is asking for approvals for that twelve-story building. This is right in the middle of our project, right at the heart, and this represents about four hundred and eighty units of residences that, you know, could fit right in the heart of this project and it would really take North City to the next level, again, incorporating a lot of ground floor retail space. And these are just some additional images of some of the spaces that would exist, such as lobby and the amenity deck on the upper floor. I do want to just touch on the energy-efficient improvements that we will be committing to in this next building. So probably my favorite thing is that we're going to be installing a two-megawatt battery or ESS, an energy storage system. And what we're going to do with that is we're going to charge it up based on the solar power at night, or during the day, excuse me, and at night, we're going to additionally charge it up during off-peak hours so that we can draw from it at peak hours, saving costs and reliance on the grid for both of our residents and for the house meters as well. There will also be these underground duct banks so that in the future, we can actually connect this battery to other batteries and other energy creation systems such as other PV panels on other buildings so that we can start the creation of these micro-grid. We also have about ten percent of our parking spaces, so there's a five hundred and thirty spaces parked for this building, fifty-three of them will have EV charging, phase two, day one, we will be plumbed for fifty percent of all of those parking spaces to have phase two charging in the future, should that demand. And just as reference, again, we have eleven stations at Block C, there's two hundred and sixty-six units and we're only now going beyond where the demand is for more. That's all I have, but I do want to ask staff, there's a quick video in the package that I sent, I don't know if you can pull that up, Art?
Before we start that, I would just like to mention if anyone in the public would like to turn in a speaker slip, now would be a good time to do that. We have ten public speakers so far, just wanted to remind you to fill out a speaker slip and you can put it right back in the little basket.
It's titled Applicant Jazz in the Plaza.
Can I ask a question about the public workshops that you conducted?
Sure.
Can you share a little bit about, really, the participation that you received from our residents? What kind of comments, concerns did you, did you end up hearing? Because you did mention that you participated in the public workshop November of twenty-twenty-one and then you shared that you conducted a couple of private workshops. So if you can just share what the interaction was and some of the concerns and how those were addressed?
Absolutely, and I should have mentioned, I mean, a private workshop is a bit misleading. We sent out the exact same letters, so that seven thousand, almost eight thousand letters that the city sent out for their public workshop, we mirror-imaged that and sent out those letters to the exact same people noticing them of these private workshops. And simply when we say private was, we as the applicant hosted them, but they were open to the public for them to come and attend. They were not as well-attended as the public workshop that was put on in November, but I can tell you there were definitely some repeat attendees, a few folks that were just looking for information and a few folks that are probably here tonight to have a few words after this application is done. But the commentary that they brought up, most of them, I would, I don't want to categorize, but some of the concerns were more around this being a referendum on our project or an opportunity to say, hey, stop development because there's enough X, Y and Z out there today, whereas we're quite simply, we're not asking for more residential units, we're not asking for more retail, more office space collectively. It's simply how we build out the entitlements that we've already been approved for today. So I think staff did a really great job documenting, they were at those hearings as well, so they documented the public commentary at that time. And it followed just in line with what Art's presentation had.
Okay, thank you for that.
Sure. I just wanted to, I don't know if this video will run, but this was something that occurred right before the Planning Commission hearing and it was something that, again, I just wanted to show tonight, I don't know if audio works, but this was the Double Peak Elementary School Jazz Band end-of-year recital that they hosted on, I think it was June tenth and it was something completely unorganized by us. It was, the businesses spoke to whoever the head of the Jazz Department at the elementary school was and put on their end-of-years recital. And this is really what it's all about, it's about creating these, you know, serendipitous places and experiences that you really just don't find elsewhere in our community today. The jazz is just really cute as well, so I just wanted to play that. Last but not least, I did want to call up as part of our applicant presentation, Leon Widen from Cal State San Marcos. Leon, will you come on up and have a few words? So this is, you know, our main liaison at Cal State San Marcos, so from a critical partner to us and somebody that deserves the microphone as part of our presentation. So, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Jones, council members, city staff. My name is Leon Widen, I'm Vice President for Finance and Administrative Services and Chief Financial Officer at Cal State San Marcos. You know, North City has been a tremendous partner to CSUSM over the last decade. You know, together we opened the Quad Affiliated Student Housing ten years ago this fall. We partnered on the Extended Learning Building, the first public-private partnership of its kind for an academic building in the state of California. North Commons, our latest partnership, is opening this fall, ensuring that our campus can keep up with the demand for on-campus housing from the students of our region. can keep up with the demand for on-campus housing from the students of our region, the majority of whom come from Southern California. With its farmers' markets, restaurants, meeting spaces, and residential complexes, North City is blurring the lines of the university and the community. There's vibrancy that had previously been missing, an exciting extension of the campus where students, our faculty, and staff can live, work, and play. Not only is this good for our students and for their co-curricular development, but it's good for our city and our region. North City has brought out-of-the-box thinking through authentic, sustainable urban planning, and we look forward to seeing how development will continue to evolve, meeting the needs of local communities, the campus, and the region as a whole. So, my presentation is brief, but we've been good partners with North City for the last 10 years, and we'd like to continue that partnership. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, next will be our public speakers, do we have any questions among, amongst the council?
I'd like to hear the public commentary first.
Perfect, okay. We have 14 speakers, so, so that we can get through everyone, we're going to limit you to three minutes today, which should be plenty of time for everyone to have their voice heard. So, I'm going to tell, I'm going, I'm going to name the first three people, and then I'm going to keep going as I, as we have speakers. So, the first will be Jim Ambrojo, followed by Chris Pascal, and then Cameron Palasban. Jim Ambrojo.
Good evening, Mayor Jones and council members, I'm here tonight, and my capacity is Chairman of the Board for the San Marcos Chamber of Commerce, so we're not going to talk trash tonight. The Chamber of Commerce is here to express our strong support for the amendments to this project that are before you tonight. We have lived in this part of North City for three years now, we're in a kind of a unique position, having our offices there, and we've begun to see what can happen as we continue to develop North City. It's been exciting, having the farmers' market there, having some of the street fairs there, and to see the businesses that come as incubators, even in the Union Cowork facility where we office, and to watch them grow and develop their businesses, and hire folks from the nearby campus, and begin to bring to life this vision, and what we see is good for San Marcos business. The proposed development is, is significant, obviously, but we think it's good, it's good to promote something that's very pedestrian-friendly. We all love to interact in that community, we've gotten out, we walk around, we enjoy the restaurants, we enjoy the surroundings, and to see the paseo proposal and the green spaces that are proposed there will only be attractive, more attractive for business to come and establish their facilities there, to do business there. It'll be a much more enjoyable environment, and it's just already, it's got that buzz. Some people describe it, there's a real wow factor there already, and we've just begun. So, we think this has a lot of future potential. The other thing about the, the height and the visual impact is, we see that as fairly attractive for folks traveling along the 78, considering where they're going to do business, where they're going to open their business or make investment, where they're going to live, when they see this in San Marcos, we're confident, it's a place that they're going to want to go. Business is happening in San Marcos when they see this kind of development occurring, these kinds of structures, they're attractive, they're, they're offering housing, they're offering jobs. One of the things about the university being next door, and as, as a Chamber of Commerce, we're networking with them now, we want to grow our own, everyone is looking for, for employees, we're, we're just trying to find talent and, and trained individuals, and the university's right there for us, and what a great opportunity to take the university and provide investment and business opportunities right here at North City, and enhance this whole, whole area, and make it a significant place to live, to work, and to enjoy life. So, I don't want to go on, there's been so many good things said about it already, the business community is supportive of this project and these amendments, and we strongly encourage you to move forward with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? No? Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to Chris Pascal, Cameron Palasban, oh, I better put my glasses on, Cameron Palasban, and then Noah Garrison will be following.
Good evening, my name's Chris Pascal, and I'm here to support the proposed changes to the plans for North City tonight. I've been involved in real estate projects for 35 years in the county, and I must let you all know, the city of San Marcos is very lucky that they've got Seabreeze Properties as their partner in North City. What they have created, and what they continue to try and create, and they refine it on a regular basis, is what the community needs, what the community desires. You've got a university here in San Marcos that is one of the most thriving places in the state of California, if you ask the state educators, it's the fastest-growing, it is the most diverse, and what we've learned is that the students that graduate from San Marcos, Cal State San Marcos, want to live and work and play in this community upon graduation. What that requires is employers to employ these young minds, and what the Seabreeze folks have developed is a community that will allow that to occur. What they're proposing is less dense, it will have less traffic, and will provide a better skyline, a more interesting skyline for your residents. They can build it this way, but employers and people want it this way, because this way creates more outdoor spaces for people to gather. People live in San Diego County because of weather, weather means you want to be outside, and what they have proposed with their paseos, their open spaces, their very interesting skylines, the mixed-use development, will meet the needs of not only the students, but also the residents and the future employers of the city of San Marcos. And, if jobs and prosperity are what you want here in the city of San Marcos, I would strongly suggest you adopt the proposed changes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris. Next is Cameron Palasban, Noah Garrison, followed by Michael Winter.
You pronounced that right?
I did, good, I always worry, thank you.
Hi, everyone, my name is Cameron Palasban. Today, the word we're talking about is "future." Change in our future is inevitable. What kind of future do we want to have? Personally, I'm in favor of the amendment, because I don't think there will be an opportunity for San Marcos like this in any near future if we reject this. What are, what are the alternatives? More soulless rows of suburban homes, and poorly-designed structures like the Kaiser Hospital, no offense, and, and, and more traffic? Those aren't good alternatives to me. A bit about me and what I do, I was born in San Diego to a family of immigrants, one side escaping revolution, the other economic depression, and I grew up in North County in San Marcos my entire life, learning at San Marcos schools, watching the town I grew up in go from a rural suburb to a city on the cusp of something greater. I run operations at Invisible Technologies, we're a company I co-founded in 2015, we started in San Diego County, spent the first few months working from homes and garages in our local neighborhoods of San Marcos, Oceanside, and Encinitas. Today, we now have over 900 team members around the world, with offices in San Francisco and New York. I still run our operations of over 800 folks from San Marcos at Union Cowork in North City, and I bounce around the states and across the world regularly, but find myself back here most of the time. Unfortunately, only three of our employees live and work in the area, three of the 900. I want that to change. This project will attract more of our type of business. I've just come back from traveling all over the place, different cities, even rural and suburban neighborhoods like South Carolina and outside of, outside of Chicago. San Marcos, I think, has the potential to be a paradise, urban meets nature. I think there's a lot of arguments against suburbia, to put it simply, suburbia is predictably formulaic and repetitive, we're not meant to be formulaic and repetitive, we're meant to, to have community, to bond. Urbanization can also be uncomfortable, and we don't want meshes of concrete and steel everywhere, this project is not that. This project is something that we have a choice to say, "Hey, we want to invest in something authentic and new." So, these are lofty words, but I think this is a time for us to decide what kind of future we want for San Marcos, so I'm a supporter, thank you.
Thank you, Cameron, and good for you, 900 employees, keep, keep going along. Okay, Noah Garrison, followed by Michael Winter, and then Madison Cavanna will be after that.
Hello, good evening, Mayor Jones and city council members, my name is Noah Garrison, I'm appearing for the law firm of Lazo Jury on behalf of Supporters Alliance for Environmental Responsibility, or SAFER. Thank you for taking time to hear our comments this evening. SAFER objects to use of the 2017 addendum to the 2009 EIR, or final ER for the project. Under CEQA, an addendum is not appropriate where there are new significant environmental impacts or new available mitigation measures for a project. Under those considerations, SAFER is requesting that the city postpone or put off its approval tonight, and instead create a supplemental EIR, or at the very least, a mitigated negative declaration prior to any approval. Our expert comments, however, that were submitted this afternoon, and that I'll discuss briefly tonight, really do counsel that a supplemental EIR is required for the project in this case. And specifically, an addendum to an EIR is not appropriate under both CEQA or California Regulations 15164, or under Guideline Section 1512, where either substantial changes are proposed to the project, or substantial changes in the circumstances of the project occur that involve new significant environmental impacts or changes to mitigation measures, and, and further are not appropriate where those significant impacts or mitigation measures were not discussed in the original programmatic EIR, and those conditions are present in this case. Instead, CEQA does permit agencies to tier EIRs, in other words, where a programmatic or a larger-scale plan or policy was created, a subsequent EIR that is project-focused can be tiered with that to allow for further review. But, the, the critical consideration is that the ER for the program only serves to the extent that it contemplates and adequately analyzes the potential environmental impacts of the project. Where that has not occurred, a new EIR is required. And, so, in this case, there are multiple conditions that were not discussed or considered in the 2009 programmatic EIR that therefore require additional review now. In particular, the, the project is likely to have significant impacts on indoor air quality as a result of formaldehyde emissions that were not previously analyzed in the 2009 EIR. Our industrial hygienist, Francis Bieda Offerman, who's a professional engineer, conducted a review of the project, and came to the conclusion that it is likely that the project would expose residents and commercial employees of the project to significant impacts related to indoor air quality. We also found that the EIR, or that the project would have significant impacts on biological resources, including special consideration species that are present at the site and around the site, and further, that there are mitigation measures available for greenhouse gases that were certainly not considered in 2009, all of which are detailed in our letter and must be considered, properly reviewed by the project in a supplemental EIR before that the project is approved. Thank you very much for your time, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Michael Winter, followed by Madison Cavanna, followed by Erasmo Escamilla.
Good evening, Mayor Jones and city council members and city staff, and also my neighbors that are here today, I'm really privileged to speak before you. As you mentioned, my name is Michael Winter, I grew up in Escondido, and while I grew up there, I began working actually here in San Marcos in the mid-'80s. I was three, no, I was a little older than that, but, you know, started working out here and saw, have seen San Marcos change so much. My wife and I bought our first home here in the mid-'90s when she was pregnant with our first kid. A few kids later, we bought another home over in Discovery Hills and continued to produce children, so we've raised five kids here, the youngest of which will graduate San Marcos High School next year, and we've been really happy to be here in San Marcos, have attended the churches here, coached numerous, you know, softball teams and soccer teams and basketball teams, all that sort of stuff. I began a real estate career in 2000, not long after purchasing that home in 1999 in Discovery Hills. I'm a participant in the, in the community, I'm a member of the Chamber of Commerce here, I, I volunteer as an executive in residence at the Cal State San Marcos, I'm a, I'm a member, a volunteer for the San Diego Mountain Rescue Team, I also serve on their board. And, I don't share these things about me as though my opinion matters than any, more than anybody else here. My opinion is as weighty as anybody else's, but it's just that this is the perspective of a, of a father, of a husband that has raised kids here, that participates in this community. I've actually been a tenant at North City since October of last year, so not very long. I've got a kid that works at Mesa Rim, Jim, and I can't tell you how wonderful it's been, I long for the type of community that we have right there, where I can show up there, I run into people I know on a regular basis. I had an office right next to Mama Katz for years, and, you know, if I went into Mama Katz, I might see somebody, but people didn't wander by that I got to see. I've had offices in downtown Escondido, in Vista, in La Jolla, and I've never had this type of community feel that I've had there in Union Cowork in San Marcos. And, I really look forward to that continuing to grow and expand, to where as I get older, I just found out I'm going to be a granddad, you know, on Father's Day, so I want to see my kids and my grandkids have this kind of opportunity, an urban space in a suburban city. So, I'm in, I'm in support of this, again, my opinion doesn't matter more than anybody else's, but from the perspective of a father, a dad, and a community member, I'm in support of this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madison Cavanna, followed by Erasmo Escamilla, and then Paul Mendoza.
Hi, can you hear me?
You can pull it down a little bit, but don't worry, I would have to do it too, so don't feel bad.
Wow, everyone sounds so confident, I'm nervous, you guys are scary.
No, we're not scary.
I'm Madison Cavanna, and I'm 24 years old, I'm a college student and a Block C resident. Because of where I live, I don't have to use my car basically ever, I walk seven minutes to my school, Cal State San Marcos, every day, or when I have class, I walk two minutes down a flight of stairs to my job at Copavita, the coffee place where I've served a couple of you before, and also 12 minutes to the grocery store, which is Ralph's, that's my walk there, and on the fun days, two minutes to draft where I get a beer or a burger. But, the main times I use my car is on the weekends, and that's just to go to the beach, I'm not going to walk an hour there, but that's a 20-minute drive, and so, 20-minute drive to the beach, 20-minute drive to see my boyfriend or my family four minutes away. Besides that, can count on my 10 fingers how many times I've used my car since I've lived there since August. I picked this place to live because I feel safe, my dad and I came here last year, and we looked around, and even though it was COVID and none, no people were out, but we looked around and could tell that it was really safe, and the way they made it in that little community was just something I really wanted to live in. And, since I've lived there, I've noticed the safe environment, the social environment, and how little I use my car, just within not even a year. One of my favorite parts of living there are all the people I've met, and the little sitting areas and coffee patios right outside my building. I wish for this plan to go through, because I wish there was more room for all of us to hang out. There are too few sitting areas and too little places to relax, when I go and look at the farmer's market, which I did today, everyone's using the chairs, I think there's six places to sit out there, except for four benches on either side of the street, and it's just a bummer that when I want to sit there and enjoy watching all the people, I can't. So, then I just go right back up to my room and miss out on all the fun there. This community is by far the favorite I've ever lived in, and I lived in a lot of places in California, and I really want the social scene to grow, so I am in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Madison. Erasmo Escamilla, Paul Mendoza, followed by Deborah. Okay, I'll go back, I'll ask, I'm sure, that's an, that's an E, right? Yeah, okay, just make sure I'm reading it right. Paul Mendoza, followed by Deborah, and then Jonathan Amen.
Hello, I'm Paul Mendoza, so I'm a father of two kids, and I have a wife, we lived in San Marcos for 10 years or so, and then District Four. And, so I, first of all, I, I love Phase A, I love that whole downtown area, we've had a great time down there. My children, one's 17, soon to be 18, and the other's 13. 17, soon to be 18, and the other's 13. They both are using the free NCS/ NCTD Transit Pass, which is available. So, this summer, they've gone over to the jumping place. I don't know what it's called. But public transit in our city, if you look at a map, it looks really good. Like, you're like, oh, that's really impressive. Like, you've got all these bus lines, you've got the Sprinter. But then when you try to schedule a trip and you have to connect, it's really hard. So, for all these new areas, like you've got the Creek District, you've got all this new development, we have to make sure that we have bus transit times that are quick, like every 10 minutes. Right now, it's every 30 minutes. And so, if you're trying to even do one connection, it's like a trip that should take you 15 minutes is now going to be an hour and 20 minutes. Especially if you miss a connection, it's really hard then. So, like my son, he wanted to go to someplace at the edge, wanted to go someplace on Sycamore, but he'd have to connect from the 305 to another line, and that was going to take him an hour to make that connection. So, the reason we're not getting a lot of transit usage, I think, in our city is because we're not getting, we don't have enough frequency. So, I'm hoping that with the density that this project will bring, that it will bring the ability to actually have transit lines that are frequent, and maybe that will reduce some of the traffic. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Paul. Next up is Deborah, followed by Jonathan Amon, followed by Mike Zumbalan.
Hello.
Hello.
My name's Deborah Willhite. I have lived in San Marcos for 38 years, and lived in Discovery Hills for 30 years. I've raised four children in San Marcos. It's been a fabulous community. I love that I can just let my little dog out in the backyard and bounce it around. I don't have to walk it anywhere. And I can't imagine that you want to stack people 16 stories high on top of each other. This is not the movie Ready Player One, I'm sorry to say. My other concern is, living in Discovery Hills, I have not had a decent bike-riding lane or walking pedestrian lane to go to Restaurant Row. From my community, I can just walk there, but I can't walk there safely. And now, thankfully, 30 years later, I am getting a bridge, two bridges, as a matter of fact, and I'm very thankful for that. So, to say that they're going to delete a pedestrian bridge, I feel that that is not a good thing. And the fact that they would leave that to the next builder, that is not a good thing either, especially because they're saying that they're trying to make this a very walkable, ride-your-bike community. Why wouldn't you make it as accessible as you could? So, my concern is that when I walked in here, I saw the mission of San Marcos as a safe family neighborhood, and I don't want to lose that for this town of San Marcos. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. Next speaker is Jonathan Amon, followed by Mike Zumbalan, and after Mike will be Sarah Nguyen.
Hi, everyone. It's loud, yeah. Mayor, thank you so much. Thanks for putting together a forum like this where we can all, you know, share our opinions. I think it's awesome. I am, like Michael, who spoke here just a little bit ago, I'm a father, husband. I've got five kids now, and we actually, a couple of years ago, just bought a home, our first home, in San Marcos. And I can't say that all of it was due to the developments that were happening in North City, but a large part was because of that. And that is because at the time, you know, my parents actually, I'm really representing three generations of our family. My parents have lived here for 20 years. And we wanted to come back and be in town with them as we were having more kids and just, you know, getting that family support. But the other thing was, we had a business. And so, as we were looking places to put the business, we were living in Temecula, and we really were looking for an opportunity to have a place where we could bring clients in, where we could continue to grow the business. And we felt like with the proximity of Cal State San Marcos there, with, you know, the talented students that we had actually already started to recruit from, it was just a fantastic place for us to be. And so, that's kind of a business aspect. It's a place where we decided, my wife and I decided, that for our generation, we wanted to move and plant roots here. And we've just been so thrilled to be able to do that. That's kind of the business impact. And I see, and I'm very much here in favor of, you know, approving this. The differences that I see, it sounds like the existing plan, you know, and I was able to be here for another meeting, the existing plan gives the allocation to the space, but, you know, it's a question of height or not. And when I think of the height versus the width, I think about my daughters, you know, who love going to Nguyen's Ice Cream, you know? And I think about my, and my sons too, you know, I've got nine, and nine through newborn. And I just think they enjoy so much being in those open spaces. I know we entertain, we bring family from out of town into the open spaces. So, more open spaces, given the same amount of allotments that are already available, just makes so much sense. And so, yeah, that's, that's kind of the main two impacts from a family side and then from a business side. And I'm really proud to be living here. And when I see more things like this happening, it makes me really excited. And I know there's this temporary inconvenience of, you know, traffic and some different things, but we get excited, you know? We see things like this that are happening. And I'm really thankful to the guys over at Seabreeze, the way that they're doing this. And so, yeah, I'm definitely in favor. Thank you so much for hearing my take.
Thank you. Mike Zumbalan, followed by Sarah Nguyen, and then Lucinda Marla.
Good evening. My concern is with the height flexibility as it relates to affecting density and mobility. Looking through the numbers of the units built out, I see 1,686 units already built. That only leaves 1,714 to be built to get to the 3,400 that I keep seeing on all the charts for multifamily residential students. Looking at the signs that have been posted out there, and I talked to Art about this once, where their locations are at and stuff, on the corner of Discovery and Twin Oaks, and over by the entrance to the construction and in the 12-story. 484 units on a 12-story. There's a sign out there that's got 632 units where the 16-story building would go. If you do the math on those types of units, times 16 stories, times 12 stories, times 15 stories, basically, you're 3,400 units. If they were all built out to that height and to that density, you would have somewhere in the neighborhood of 5,500 units, not 3,400. And add to that Discovery Village South, another 600, you'd be over 6,000 units. The average cars per household unit is 1.7 in California, so you're going to need parking for 10,000-plus. That's not being offered in this particular plan. And the average occupants in a house is three, so you've got 18,000 people crammed into 200 acres. That's almost like being imprisoned. So, I'm not a big advocate of height flexibility. I think they had a good plan in 2014. They should have worked with it and done it and completed it, rather than come up with new schemes to see if we can get bigger investors, because the people that are going to be building these high-rise buildings are going to be investors. They're not going to be people who'll own them and develop equity over time. And that is a concern to this community. They're all going to be pouring rent into the wealthy pockets. So, I looked at mobility, and our walk score is 52, our bikeable score is 54, that's somewhat, transit score is zero for the city, because it's limited locations. And your intersectional level of service is F, pretty much across the board, according to our 10-year plan right now. So, what are we going to do? Gridlock, gridlock, and more gridlock. The planning commission, the council, is going to have to come to grips with that, because you've got a lot of development going on in this city. Everybody wants a bite of the apple, and you don't have enough transportation capabilities to meet all that demand. And all you're going to do is create frustration and anxiety for the drivers and the walkers, which is not smart to take the bridge out, because you're going to use people crossing the crosswalk as traffic calming. How many people turn behind you? How many people turn in front of you before you get through the crosswalk? People do it, you do it, I do it. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mike. Sarah Nguyen, followed by Lucinda Marla, followed by Deborah Pei.
Hi.
Hello, Sarah Nguyen.
I'm much shorter than Mr. Mike. I actually wrote a couple notes this time. I came straight from the airport, so it is important to be here. I think we all have different perspectives, and I think they're all valid and fair and really important. I do. I think it's something that we have to take into consideration for all of the generations that have been here, their perspective on it, because it helps field and narrow that vision of curation that I think you guys are trying to do. I think that what I want to speak to specifically is the integrity of Seabreeze and Mr. Levitt. I never know if I should call you by your first name. But they have shown such kindness and faith in us as a business, but I'm also a resident. And it's really important to me where I'm spending time with my children and my family and my friends as well. So, to see them approach businesses from that kindness and community thought process speaks volumes to me. They will ask questions about what do your neighbors want? What are they looking for in this community? And I really do appreciate that a lot. As far as their future thinking, I think that's really important as well. I know I look like I'm about 12 from over here. You can't see my white hair. But I have lived in five states and four countries, and I have been in cities that were just beginning to develop in the 70s. And I went back after 30 years, and to see the impact of a careful plan, and when they take the time to make those spaces for the community, it is such a different environment for everyone that continues to live there and grow there and keep their generations of wealth, as far as spending your money in your business, or in your homes, or in your children's education. I've lived in college towns, Ann Arbor, University of Michigan. I've lived in Montreal on the West Island, where it is so dense and so populated. But the jewels of that city are these little vibrant communities, where each neighborhood has a gathering place. And so, for me, yes, we want to curate it, we want to be careful, and we want to hear everyone's opinion and perspective. But I don't think we'll get a builder like Seabreeze showing up at our door every day in San Marcos. I live here, I drive up and down the hill 17,000 times a day for soccer, for the shop, for all the things. And I see the view, and I see the changes, and even from my house window, I see the changes. Some of it is just change. But I know that I can trust them. And that's where I do want to say that I favor what they're doing here. So, there you go. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. The next speaker is going to be Lucinda Marla, followed by Deborah Pei, and then I'm going to try to get as Erasmo Escamia, if he happens to be here. So, Lucinda Marla is next. Now, Lucinda, okay. Deborah Pei? Deborah's here.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Deborah Pei. I'm a resident here of 20 years, more than 20 years, in San Marcos, in Discovery Hills. And I'm just disappointed that the bridge has been removed, the pedestrian bridge. That Creek District was described 20 years ago, or in 2006, I think it was, as being an area that's going to be for pedestrians with pedestrian-friendly, and it was going to be a center for the town. Yes, there are new bridges, there will be new bridges, and they will have footpaths along those. But you have a large residential area right beside the creek, which has existed there for many years now. And to require those people to walk across those bridges instead of using a pedestrian bridge seems like a big shame, considering what you were trying to make of the Creek District. My son has been attending Palomar College, and he would be one of many students who I imagine would cross that bridge into and through the district and on to San Marcos Boulevard, on to Las Poses, and pick up the bus that goes to Palomar College. As another speaker remarked, some of those bus routes are not that helpful. They don't connect that well. And in particular, that stretch of Discovery, I believe, is not one that is supposed to have the bus running down it. So, you're now cutting out what could be a shortcut and access to public transport and to San Marcos Boulevard that would eliminate the use of cars, either by people taking the students to the bus stop, or to the cinema, and all those other places along that street. So, I'm disappointed that it's being removed, and I'm hoping that at some point it could be reinstated as an idea, because it seems a big shame when you have an area that is such a pedestrianized area, that we're all looking to increase and improve our outdoor activities and enjoy our town. But the pedestrian side of things is taking the short route. The car's being given the predominance again, and a bridge is not too much for pedestrians to ask for, I don't think. That's my point. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Deborah. I actually think I will call on staff if I can do that. So, I think she is misunderstanding that it's going to be going to San Marcos Boulevard that a pedestrian bridge is being taken out. So, could you, someone address that? I don't know who that would be. I can't, I can't get to a map to show, because on the two bridges, there are actually pedestrian pathways on those, but what they're talking about is way over on the other side. So, I'm hoping we could bring up a map to clarify that.
Art is working on that, Mayor.
Okay. Sorry to put you on the spot. I know that's, we don't normally do that. I just thought that in case she has to leave, we could address that quickly, if possible.
Maybe one more.
Yes. So, the bridge that they're talking about that is a pedestrian bridge is not on, not by Discovery Hills, it's actually on the other side?
That's...
Okay, sorry. We can't have speakers address, it won't be caught on the video and everything. So, if, I'm sorry, you guys.
There is a bridge proposed over Discovery Street, just west of Twin Oaks Valley Road, and that's the one that is proposed to be removed. It doesn't provide that connection to San Marcos Boulevard, per se. It provides connectivity between the south side of Discovery and the north side of Discovery, where residential areas exactly, the lower left-hand circle there. And then the bridge that, in theory, could provide that connectivity to San Marcos Boulevard is a vehicular bridge that is proposed at Johnston Lane over the creek.
Right. That's, that's, that's a different bridge.
That's a vehicular bridge.
Right. Okay, okay. I thought she was talking about across San Marcos Boulevard, where the creek actually is right now, today. That's my misunderstanding, then. I'm glad I asked, because that didn't make sense to me. So, that was on the other side, over by Home Depot, but it would, again, take out, correct? That's what we're talking about? Johnston Lane?
We're talking about removing both of these, the Johnston, the Johnston Lane vehicular, and then the pedestrian-only over Discovery. Those are both proposed to be removed.
Right. Okay, okay.
Madam Mayor, I think this government understands the pedestrian bridge on Discovery crosses about where the Kaiser Hospital is. That's the frame of reference for where that bridge is on the current specific plan. It's not anywhere near the Creek District area at all. There's...
Or San Marcos Boulevard. That's why I was just trying to clarify that.
Or San Marcos Boulevard, that's correct.
Okay, perfect. All right. Thanks. Yes.
And can we also clarify that the Via Vera Cruz Bridge and the Bent Bridge does have a pedestrian-friendly crossing?
The Bent Avenue Bridge has sort of normal sidewalks. The Via Vera Cruz Bridge will have a, I think it's a 10-foot-wide trail/side walk on one side, and then a normal sidewalk on the other side. So, it'll have pedestrian on both sides. One side, it'll be wider than the other.
So, anybody living in Discovery Hills would likely use those two bridges and not walk all the way down to Kaiser to cross over?
Yeah, I would assume that most folks who live in Discovery Hills wanting to get in that area would come down Via Vera Cruz and cross there, because that's, I mean, obviously there's other, where it comes out on Craven. But to get to San Marcos Boulevard, the Via Vera Cruz would be the place to do it.
Right, right. Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Okay. Next speaker is Erasmo Escamia, if he happens to be here or she happens to be here. I don't think so. Okay. All right. That is the last of our public speakers. Next, we will go back to questions that council had... Next, we will go back to questions that council has of staff or our applicant or whoever.
You want to ask poor Randy sitting up there all by himself?
Randy, you've been so patient. Do you have any questions of staff or the applicant?
Yeah, actually I do. Mr. Levitt, Gary Levitt, mentioned something about a 50-year time horizon. And I wondered if he might be willing to expand on what he means by that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, he's coming, I'm sorry.
The answer is, the, the investment we're making and our partners are making in the community, the intention today is not to sell. We are long-term investors in real estate. And if it was good enough to buy in the first place, then we aren't intending to sell in the near term. So when we look at lifetime cycles, we assume it's 50 years. I know I most probably will not be here. But the important thing is that from a community perspective, we're not intending to sell. It's a very unique situation. I know personally that since I've been involved in this community, other projects, other apartment projects and shopping centers that have been approved during the time that I've been in the community, there's not one of them that is still owned, to the best of my knowledge, not one of them that's still owned, but the people who came before you for an approval. It's just the nature of the business. And we're in a, we're in a very unique position to be able to make that statement. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? And I think I actually forgot a speaker. It was kind of in my messy desk right now. Lucinda? Did Lucinda come up? Or maybe she wasn't here? Okay. All right, I just wanted to ask one more time, make sure she didn't, she wasn't here and I missed her. Okay. Any other questions or comments of staff or the applicant? From the council?
Did you have more, Randy?
Oh.
I thought he had more.
No more questions.
Okay, wait, hold on, we have a speaker. Did I call your name?
You did not, Ms. Jones, but I'm going to speak for a moment.
Wait, 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 wait. No, hold on, hold on one second. Did you fill out a speaker slip?
I didn't, but there's a reason why I didn't. That's because a working, a working gentleman like myself doesn't have such time. But if you will give me just a couple moments.
Can I get you to fill out a speaker slip, please? Sorry, we need it for the record.
Sure thing.
We cannot require a speaker slip.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We can request a speaker slip.
Okay, okay.
So he's indicating, I believe, that he will not be filling out a speaker slip.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Peak. So luckily, I made it here just in time. My name is Caleb. I'm a 20-year-old San Marcos resident. I've grown up in this town since the day I was born. And unfortunately, I have had to move out of the town for educational purposes, going north to Cal Poly, San Luis Obispo. However, San Marcos is still my home and still my primary address. It will always be my home and is the number one place of which I wish to return to. I proudly come before you to speak about this topic today because I care so much that as I got home from my work, a 40-hour work week, a 10-hour work day, this meeting was on a computer in front of our kitchen table. Typical American household family kitchen table topic right here in our local community. After hearing some of the sentiments that I heard delivered by the lovely people here, we all love and care about this town, which is amazing to see. But we all have different perspectives on how it should develop. For me, I can't understand the need for a 16-story building right here in our small, lovely, local community. It almost seems like, when I was growing up, I was bullied a lot for being a San Marcos kid, not being a Carlsbad kid, as someone who loved to go to the beach. It almost seems like San Marcos is longing for something to keep up on that podium with Carlsbad, Encinitas, Del Mar, and so on. But why must we keep up with the Joneses? Why must we keep developing? Why can't we spread out? In my secondary address of San Luis Obispo, their building code does not allow for buildings over four stories. A school that is over 50% a larger undergrad than Cal State San Marcos. Now, I'm all in favor for low-cost housing, people working to do better, and so on. But I do not think this is the way. Thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate this.
Thank you, Caleb. Okay, so no, no more questions. We need to close the public hearing at this point in time. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I have, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So do we want to do that during comments or?
We can still ask questions, I think.
Okay, I'd like to wait to close the public hearing.
After we close the public hearing? I should be asking, Mrs. Peak. Yes.
If we have questions of the applicant or staff, we should do it during public hearing? Helen?
If you're going to be asking questions of the applicant, I would just leave the public hearing open until such time as that is concluded.
Okay, so you have questions of the applicant, not us?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Sounds good.
Somebody could come up? I think we addressed the pedestrian bridge and clarified that that's not in the Creek District. Can you address, there was a comment made about 6,000 units. Can you, can you address that? Because I don't see that anywhere on the chart.
I similarly, council member, do not know where that number came from. There are 3,400 residential units approved in the university district-specific plan. He may be referring to outside of the university district. I did hear him mention Discovery Village South, and that is not a part of the university district. So within our specific plan area, 3,400 residential units, I think staff had a breakdown, there's 800 of those are student units. So that leaves 2,600 residential. Of that 2,600, 15% will be affordable. The remainder, there will be a mix of multifamily. And there will be a significant portion of for-sale housing that is currently being graded right now on the west side of Twin Oaks Valley Road. So another public comment was, you know, that all this equity is disappearing. But I beg to differ, there's 650 for-sale units that are going to be coming to the market over the next coming years.
Okay, so just to confirm, you're not building any more than 3,400?
Correct.
Units, which is what was in before. The other question I have is, could you address the, the comments that were made about environmental impacts, indoor air quality? Have you had any of those same concerns?
Yep.
In your current buildings that you've completed so far?
Sure, we are, we are prepared to respond. So if I, if I may, I'll call up our environmental consultant, Sophia Mitchell.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council members. My name is Sophia Mitchell with Sophia Mitchell &amp; Associates. And my firm prepared the addendum to the final environmental impact report for the project. And I did want to take this time to provide an overview of the responses that we prepared in response to the attorney letter that you're referencing. And a copy of those were also emailed to the city clerk and council in advance of this meeting. And so I'll just provide a brief overview. The letter from Lozuron Jury on behalf of Safer, which was submitted this morning, addresses the addendum to the EIR as well as topics such as indoor air quality, biological resources, and greenhouse gases. With regards to Sequo compliance and the use of an addendum, we conducted a careful initial study checklist process, and each environmental topic under Sequo was unanalyzed. This checklist process serves as the basis for the conclusion that an addendum to the FEIR was the appropriate Sequo documentation for the project. And this analysis included project-specific technical studies for traffic, greenhouse gas, air quality, noise, and energy. And based upon the analysis, none of the conditions described in Sequo Guideline Section 15162, which called for a subsequent EIR, are met. We have demonstrated by the addendum and the supporting information in the record that the project does not result in any new significant environmental impacts that were not previously identified, nor does the project result in an increase in the severity of impacts. And regarding the specific topics that were brought up both in the letter and by the representative, the first is indoor air quality and the formaldehyde off-gassing. The project will be required to comply with existing codes and regulations that are in place in California, which adequately address potential indoor air quality emissions from new construction. Their comment letter actually references older regulations, and CARB now has new regulations in place. If there are specific questions, our air consultants here. They also raised concerns regarding biological resources. It's important to note that since certification of the EIR, many of the areas of the project site have been developed or are under construction. And areas that are not already developed, under active construction, or identified as biological open space have been masqueraded in a manner that's consistent with the EIR and the previous approvals. Additionally, there are biological resources mitigation measures that are in the EIR that will still be applicable to the proposed project. And these measures protect sensitive vegetation ring project construction. They provide mitigation ratios and requirements for impacts to sensitive habitat and species. They also address mitigation requirements for potential impacts to wetlands and jurisdictional waters and resources. And finally, there is a requirement for current biological surveys in areas that would still require grading. All of these requirements and mitigation measures will remain in place and will ensure that biological resources, there's no increase in biological resource impacts. There is also comments brought up about bird strike and building heights in their letter. And this has already been considered in the project design. There is design standards in the specific plan which specifically discourage the use of reflective glass or mirrored glass, and also encourage patterned glass or other architectural features, such as balconies and awnings, which will break up the large expanses of glass. Finally, there were comments brought up regarding greenhouse gas and air quality. Greenhouse gas was analyzed as part of the project in both the greenhouse gas study and compliance with the city's cap. The project does not result in any new significant greenhouse gas impacts. And the project will implement all applicable climate action plan mitigation measures that are identified in the city's cap checklist, and those are required as a condition of project approval. So with that, I'll just, those were the, the brief points. I'm available for additional comments. But the analysis clearly demonstrates that an addendum is in the appropriate Sequo document. And we also have our technical consultants here if there's questions.
So, follow-up question. Have you had any of this, any of these issues brought up prior to today on the currently built projects?
In which, like these specific?
Yes, these, have you had any issues with, with any of those?
They, yes. Okay, okay.
Okay. Okay.
Just for the record, can you identify yourself when you're, when you're popping up and down to speak? Can you identify yourselves? Just so that...
Darren, Darren Levitt.
I can guarantee you we're going to need a record of this, so.
Darren Levitt, applicant. The answer to your question is no. We have not heard of, of any issues related to indoor emissions or some of the other issues brought up in that letter until this morning.
Okay. And then another question for Darren. Thank you, Sophia. The general office, to increase the general office to 920,000 square feet from whatever it is.
638,000.
Thank you. You're amassing a lot of space there. Can you explain the thought behind that?
Sure. We believe that there is ample opportunity here to attract a larger employer to our community. Some folks here might be aware, you know, businesses such as Apple are quickly growing here in San Diego. I think they grew about 2 million square feet over the past couple of years. We believe that San Marcos is ripe for selection when these larger employers, life science tenants, technology tenants are looking for their future headquarters or future homes. And so the flexibility of, of commercial office space to be incorporated into our specific plan, growing that number, from a traffic perspective, commercial office drives a lot less trips than, than retail does. And so we're significantly reducing some of the higher traffic generators and simply allocating more, more of those trips towards employment within the community.
Okay. And then the, let's see, the medical office was reduced by 100,000, and then the retail commercial was reduced by four, no, three, something.
Yeah, about half, yeah.
Can you discuss that, why that's not as much needed?
So, medical office, as we all know, Kaiser is growing quite rapidly here in the community. Scripps Health is also, they have a large project, I'm sure, coming through this council in the, in the future. So with those two players right next door and adjacent, we don't really see that there's going to be a significant appetite specifically within our project to, to grow much more. We've already developed 60,000 square feet of medical office with the Pima and Scripps tenants that exist in that building to date. So an additional 140,000 square feet is adequate to meet the demands of additional medical office tenants within the community.
Okay. And the, all the, the 30, 27 to 31 acres of parks and urban open space, that will all be able to be used by the general public?
Correct.
Just like, it won't be specific to a particular building or?
No, the, the San Parkos will continue to exist here in North City as well. Yeah, so no, it's, it's all publicly accessible spaces, correct. Nothing is privatized that we count towards that, those numbers.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Well, while, while we have you up here, and then I know Councilmember Musgrove has some questions, I think it's of Sophia?
Well, maybe you can answer it for me, please.
I'll try.
It was stated that it was either an amendment or an addendum to the EIR was deemed to be sufficient. Is there precedent for that, or was that an internal decision to address the questions?
No, there's precedent for it, and maybe Sophia can answer that more intelligently.
I just want to make sure that when this comes across, and we have this as our record, that that is a, an accepted way to address issues.
It's consistent with the state Sequo guidelines that say when an addendum is an appropriate document or when other types of documentation is, is needed. So the city has used addendum on other projects as well. There's nothing unique about this scenario.
Okay, thank you. And then, Mr. Levitt, sorry. Parking.
Yes.
A little while ago, I, I talked about the VMTs. I think for the general public, they don't realize what a sword hangs over our head as a community with VMTs. Has nothing to do with road usage, taxes, and things like that. It is, it is a formulaic process the state uses to determine whether or not we're within compliance. So my question about the VMTs and the significant reduction of this project has to do with the amount of parking. And I know that, at least I understand, the parking for the proposed residential units will be exclusively for them. There will be no impact to the parking spaces we now enjoy as members of the public when we go to North City.
No, not, not at all. So, so there's a 530-odd spaces for those 484 residential units. And then across the street, obviously, we have what we call PS2, Parking Structure 2, which is co-owned and managed with Cal State San Marcos there. That's almost a 700-space parking garage. A lot of the public may not know this, but, you know, about 200 of those spaces are 24/7 for, for our use. And the remaining balance of 500 is for the Cal State San Marcos's use. But after hours, at peak demand, when the retail and the restaurants and the farmer's market and those sorts of things are, are active, we have flexibility to utilize most of those 500 spaces for our benefit to adequately park, you know, folks visiting our communities. And similarly, the, the, it's all about the right balance between office and residential users. And so those are perfectly in balance. And I think Parking Structure 1, PS1, which is with Block C, that's a 660-space garage. It's sufficient to park 266 units, 60,000 square feet of medical office, about 50, 60,000 square feet of retail. And when I can track that on my phone, I can tell you right now that we never hit more than about 75, 80% of use at the peak demand, and even that might be high. In addition, overnight, we're actually seeing that the number of parking spaces per residential unit is actually much closer to 1.1 for a multifamily building as opposed to, you know, I heard 1.7 thrown out previously. So, you know, I can track that live right now with our 266 units and approximately 1.1 to 1.2 parking spaces per unit is being used overnight.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions. So when we think about parking, I mean, you're in close proximity of the Sprinter Station that's right there at CSU, part of the Loop. I know there's been a push by the state of California to provide no parking spaces when you're within a close proximity, which I am adamantly against, because people do still have cars, they are still going to have cars. But you're not eliminating all the spaces, and you're still accounting for people continuing with cars, which I think is, is really, really reality. But there has been some discussion of, that, that there's a notion that there will be more traffic or the same amount of traffic. more traffic or the same amount of traffic. So when you're eliminating, or not eliminating, but lowering the density of the actual retail, I mean, that's probably where the biggest savings is, because you're cutting that almost in half, essentially, the retail commercial, because that's a lot of traffic coming in. And I, I think that's one of the biggest things. Now, could you just state for the record one more time, what exactly, you know, it is not denser, it is not anything except you're moving things around as far as some of the density are actually, it's less dense in some spaces, taller buildings but more open activated space, because you're going from, let me find that number, 25 acres up to, upwards of 27 to about 31 acres. Will those all be active spaces where people will be able to use them? They're not going to be a, you know, at the top of a hill or anything like that, right?
Right, it's all, it's a, it's a variety of different experiences from, you know, soccer field to, you know, the park benches next to, that you see today in front of the Block C Plaza. So it's all usable spaces. Just to touch back on your parking comment.
Yeah.
Ultimately, the market determines what the right balance of parking spaces are. If we went with zero, which is not allowable per the specific plan, ultimately, we would be unable to, to attract renters to come to our, to our apartment buildings and to the units that we are building today. So, you know, ultimately, ridership, we all know, of these mass transit facilities is not where we all, I think, as a community, want it to be. And, and so the reliance on cars is still very, very true, but ultimately, you know, the market kind of sets what the demand is for those, for the parking spaces per unit.
And when you're given a maximum of how many units you can build, what does that mean?
That, this governing body and the city staff only allow us to build that number, so we cannot exceed it.
Okay. And then, just as far as what your, transit-wise, what you're thinking is going to happen in the future, do you have any plans for that?
We are in active talks with NCTD. You know, the Sprinter Station is not as close as we hopefully wanted it to be. Ultimately, we were hoping it would be a little bit closer. It's very close, hence we want to expand the specific plan area to be a bit more adjacent. We'd like to improve the walkability to the sidewalks. We had the public comment earlier about ADA access, and, and making better pedestrian paths to the Sprinter Station. We are continuing to talk to NCTD about those, those types of ideas. From bus transit, again, it's a chicken and egg issue. Until we have the density in these locations, we cannot request of NCTD that they add a bus stop in our, in our community, but ultimately, as the density builds over time, when we build more of these buildings, I think the demand will ultimately be there, and we would love to incorporate that considering there, the bus stops that already exist right now at Cal State San Marcos.
You know, I think at some point in time, that's just going to have to happen. I mean, we've already talked about a pilot project with NCTD, which right now isn't materializing due to COVID and shortage of workforce and, and whatnot, but I think, you know, moving forward, as long as you're continuing to have those conversations, they're necessary. We're not going to get people to North City from all over the city as, as I think you're envisioning, unless we've got some sort of shuttle, which we always had envisioned as part of our, and we, we actually set up our congestion management district. Part of the reasoning of that was to actually bring in some sort of shuttle throughout the city to move people around to CSU, Palomar College, but also something like North City would be, you know, something that, that needs to happen as well, so. Okay, any other, oh, yes.
I have more.
Yes, Deputy Mayor, sorry.
I, the affordable part of it. On the staff slide that talks about, and I, I love that, that staff and, and you have decided to do the different thresholds, so it's going to happen during the project, not all at the end. And this is now going to be in various areas within the project, so you're not going to try to segregate affordable to one side or the other. You're going to put it at different locations within to meet your 15%.
Correct.
Is that my understanding?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so some will be on the west side of Twin Oaks and some will be on the east side. Is that correct?
It might all be on one side or the other, but ultimately, it's not going to be in one big project.
Okay.
I mean, there's 390-odd units that we would have to, to, that's 15% of the, of the 2,600 residential. So it will be a, a mix and match. I mean, we may have one bigger building, but it's not as though you would point to that building and say, hey, that's affordable. It still has to meet the design guidelines of the specific plan of a building itself. So, you know, again, we are standing strong behind the, the statement that we want a community, and that includes affordable housing with baked in to the project. Hence, we have this tiered structure that we've agreed upon with, with city staff to implement that over time.
Okay, so, and that, just to be clear, that's when you reach a threshold, the initial, no less than 130 units, then you meet the next level and you build another, up to 170 units to get to 300?
Correct.
And then, by the time you get to the next threshold, you reach the maximum of the 15%, which is whatever that number is, 390 something.
Correct, and I think ultimately, there's, is, is, there are thresholds there to ensure that we are going to be developing all of those affordable units within the project. We're not going to be paying it in Lufy and building these off-site. It's going to be within North City. And yeah, we might take a bigger chunk out, you know, day one, we may build a bigger, bigger project day one, it may be more than 130 or maybe less, and we'll incrementally get there, but ultimately, there are locks in place where we cannot exceed a certain number of, of, of market rate units until we meet those inclusionary requirements.
Okay.
Maybe the city manager can.
Follow up on that?
Yeah.
So that 15% requirement's been in the specific plan since the beginning. What's been lacking is that timing or trigger as to how to get there, and so that was the conversation of making sure that we created attainable levels where those units could be provided, and not sort of just have a someday date out in the future when it might happen.
Okay. I think that's all of my questions. Thank you.
Any other questions? Randy? No? Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, so should I make a motion to close the public hearing?
Yes, now you can.
Okay, I'll do that.
All right, second. We have a motion and a second. Deputy Mayor Jenkins. Oh, sorry, we have to do a roll call.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry.
Aye.
Councilmember Nunez.
Aye.
Councilmember Walton.
Aye.
Councilmember Musgrove.
Aye.
And Mayor Jones, I'm also aye. Okay, public meeting, or public hearing is closed. Let's go into discussion. Did you, who wants to start off?
I can start, I'll be brief.
Councilmember, yes.
I, I think we need to make sure that everyone here and paying attention at home understands that there are current entitlements for this project. What we're looking at today are some adjustments and some expansion of a specific plan area, but we're not, as it was stated, we're not here for the final approvals. We're, we're giving them the authority to adjust their plans and then bring it back to us with those possibilities. And so it might be 16 stories, it may not be. They may look at it and say, we can make a better decision if we do this, but we have to give them, in my opinion, the opportunity and that degree of flexibility to offer those plans. And it will still come back through the normal process, through our staff to make sure it's in compliance with our procedures in place before it ever comes to us. And I, I think a lot of the discussion and some of the folks out here in the audience, the big issue is the building height. So we'll, we'll, we have to give them that opportunity to design that. I've lived in different areas. The Army took me all around the world. I visited relatives that, who lived in the former Soviet Bloc, and I've seen what it looks like when you have institutional-type construction, and it doesn't offer anything to the city. And I wrote down a couple of comments. Paul Mendoza was very appropriate when he essentially said, we need NCTD connections at North City, which is absolutely true, but again, as Darren said, it's a chicken and an egg. NCTD would say, sure, will give us the need for it while they're still battling to find enough drivers to make their current routes viable. But Cameron, I, I think he left?
He left.
Fantastic. I, I, not on the road of down, I put it in quotes, we are a city on the cusp of something greater. If, if we want to be cookie cutter like downtown San Diego, that's an easy fix. The entitlements are there, we can do it. I personally think we need to offer them the opportunity to come up with a different plan, a different look, and an idea that brings us to a place where we can look at it at the end of the day and say, this was a great innovative idea, we met our goals, we achieved open space, open to the public, and we still are moving forward, and we can set, I think, a model for the rest of our county and really Southern California that are looking to meet some of the goals and objectives that the state has set forth. The easy answer is to say stack and pack, and I, I personally don't like that, so I would like to hear some more comments, but that's my opinion at this point.
All right. Councilmember Nunez, did you have something?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have to say, I was not sure what we were going to be hearing tonight from our residents. Some of you may know, I have lived in the city a very long time. I arrived in 1981 when I was eight years old, and many of you were here at the time. Our city was very different. It was mostly ruraler. I think we had a population of about 10,000. And where the university sits today, we had our chicken ranch, right? I knew many of the families that lived there and were part of the caretaking of that ranch. And a lot of us are still here, right? A lot of the children are still here. And so we've seen a lot of changes and a lot of growth, mostly positives, some obviously negative. But personally, although over the years I was not part of the decision-making, I certainly have benefited from a lot of the decisions that were made back in the day when I was at our local elementary school, right? As I was making the decisions, what I was going to do with my education. I didn't have the opportunity to travel outside our city, so luckily, we had Palomar College here in our town where I was able to receive a great education at Palomar College. And then, as I started thinking to, where am I going to transfer? I thought, oh no, I'm going to have to go to San Diego State and go out of San Marcos, and I really didn't want to do that. But what happened really is that then the decision was made that our university would be here in San Marcos in my own backyard. And that opened up a whole world for me, for my family, and for so many residents here in our city and our region. And I think when that decision was made, and as a city, we made the decision that we were going to have this great university be such a large part of our city, I think, right, a lot of what we're deciding today really was set in motion. So I am very encouraged by what I'm hearing tonight and the overwhelming support for, for this project, for these changes that are being requested. And so I think this really is a natural development, and I do use the word development, of what was set in motion, right, as what was mentioned by several people really in the 80s. And so I've lived those changes, right? I've gone to see all of this unfold. So I'm very encouraged to see what the possibilities are. And as was mentioned already, we're not approving any definite structure size, but I am in support of the possibilities. I am in support of expanding those choices, because I do believe that overall, it will benefit our residents, it will benefit, once again, the possibility. So I am in support of those changes, and I definitely want to hear from my other colleagues what they have to say.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Walton, did you have anything?
Sure, yeah, I have a couple of comments. I want to, I want to echo some of the things that Councilmembers Musgrove and Nunez said about, about where, where we're starting this conversation tonight, and that is, there are current entitlements that exist that if nothing happened tonight, this developer could build 652,000 square feet of office, 300,000 square feet of medical, 700,000 square feet of retail that would generate 109,000 car trips a day by, by, by estimate. That, that exists right now at this moment, okay? What's being asked tonight is, is there a good cause to amend that? Do the times that we live in, the circumstances that we find ourselves, do they suggest that we should offer them the flexibility to reduce some of the things that no longer might be viable in today's economy? And so when considering that, I, I like to stop and take a look at what they've done so far, right? If you look at what's been built out at North City so far, it is, in my opinion, incredibly impressive, right? You know, you'll, you'll hear in development world about, about placemaking. We've heard tonight things like character and authenticity and increasing public spaces. You know, it's funny, we call this area the heart of the city, right, because of its location, but the truth of the matter is, is that this project is truly going to be the beating heart of this city. It's going to be the thing that, that makes us come to life. And so the question we have to answer tonight is, do we want to restrict via the current plan how all of that's going to be built on that finite level of dirt? Or are we going to offer the flexibility that's been presented tonight? For me personally, I think Councilmember Musgrove touched upon this when he talked about living overseas. I prefer less uniformity. I think there's a certain boredom you see if you have a lot of buildings the same height covering up far more ground. I, I, I think that there is an aesthetic that is more interesting when you have varying heights. And so I've been nothing but encouraged by what I have seen tonight. And by the way, this is, this is by definition smart growth, right? We are encouraging a way of living that is less dependent on the car, and that's something that I'm strongly in favor of. And if we learn something else tonight, that is, we need to do more in North County with public transit, but that's another conversation. So I, I appreciate all the presentations, I appreciate the data, I appreciate the speakers in support and, and in, and, and those who are opposed. But, but I, I think this is a very special project in our city, and, and I have a great amount of respect for these architects, designers, developers, and I'm inclined to support this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Did you, okay. Deputy Mayor?
Yes, a few comments. Some has already been stated, but I'll just share that this morning, I went and I parked on North City Drive, and I looked at those vacant lots, and I envisioned what those buildings might look like. I frequent North City, I go to Winston's all the time with my granddaughter. There is a lot going on there. Hopefully, everybody is frequenting the area. But as I sat there, I thought about, as I've done in the past, how difficult some of the decisions that have been made by past councilmembers as far as dealing with growth and changes. I was here when, when, you know, Cal State was in the realm of a possibility, and there's a lot of work going on on that. I was here when residents wanted to keep our town small and not become that college town, or when Santa Leo Hills and other communities within San Marcos started to take shape, and the residents back then didn't want those large developments here. Then I thought about what's my role as a councilmember? And we have many tasks. We're to plan for the future of San Marcos, listen to the facts that are provided by staff and the applicant, and then verified by staff and consultants. Not that you wouldn't give us the truth, but. And then, we have to keep, and listen to the public. We have to keep apprised of local and building requirements. I think we all worry about the state rules and regulations upon us right now, and we want to be in charge of our development, not the state of California. I think over the past few years, maybe longer, 10 or more, we've realized the Creek District is not going to be our downtown, and we've realized- is not going to be our downtown, and we've realized that North City is becoming our downtown. So I agree with some of the others. I think Randy made the comments. What they've done there is pretty amazing. They'd rather leave a space empty than put the wrong tenant in there. Yes, it is more urban than what we're used to, but so was Santa Leo when it came in. And that's a great community, too. I believe one day, like when the college came in and other developments that we watched happen and were unsure of, I think our children and grandchildren will feel today, tomorrow will feel that how lucky they are to live in San Marcos and that somebody had the vision and courage to create something that really is extraordinary here in San Marcos. So I too am in support of the changes.
Okay. All right. So when I first moved to San Marcos in 1987, it's been a while, I haven't lived here forever. There are probably a lot of people that lived here longer than me. I was 20 years old, I looked around and I thought, wow, this is a really cool place. This is before the university had popped up. And, you know, the place to go was Restaurant Row. And that was, everyone in North County knew about Restaurant Row, they wanted to come here. And, you know, I used to go there all the time. And the only thing that I've really noticed, and this is with any place that you live, is that change is inevitable. There's going to be change, whether there are state mandates, there are going to be change because your residents change and they want something else in the community. And there's just going to be change, you know, from a chicken ranch and Highlandia Dairy. I mean, we've seen a lot of changes. And in my time on the council, I can't believe it's now my 16th year, there have been a lot of changes, and I think many of them are really good. And, you know, when I talk to residents and they tell me how much they love our community, how it's still in some ways, even though we're a larger town now, we're about 100,000 people, it still has a very small-town character in many ways. You walk down, you know, North City Drive, and, you know, even though it's urban, it's like you see people that are, you know, at the coffee shop or at Bonafica or over at Union Cowork. I know one of our speakers spoke about that earlier. And it's true, it still does kind of feel like a small town in many ways, even though what we're talking about today is refinements. It's not, yes, it's a change in height, but it's not a change in density as far as how many people are going to be coming in. And so one of the things that I also appreciate about our city is you can go out to Twin Oaks Valley, you can have horses, you can still have chickens. And then if you want to live more urban, you can come right into, you know, our new downtown core, which is right there at North City. There is something for everyone, and that's the great part about our community. It's so different in many parts of it. And yes, it's a change, I'm not going to sugarcoat that. But, you know, we've got walking trails, we've got parks, we have, yes, we're San Parkos, and I'm really proud of all of that. And, you know, when I look at this plan, I look at the decrease in the VMTs, I look at the refinements, I look at the public spaces, they're going to be growing, hopefully it's more on the lines of six more acres and not two acres, but, you know, that's going to depend on what you come up with. But I'm expecting big things. I really, and we've had pretty, you know, a fair amount of discussion about this all along, that, you know, I was actually here when we approved the original plan back in 2009. The excitement of what we can do, I mean, is just, back to what councilmember Nunez said, possibilities are really exciting. And it's not like the whole city is going to change, it's just going to be part of it if we approve that here tonight. But I do like that it'll attract more employees and more employers, because we certainly want to keep people close to home. We don't want to have to send people, you know, an hour driving to work and an hour driving home from work. It decreases your quality of life, that is not something I want. And then having flexible options and being able to have different housing options, like I spoke about. Twin Oaks Valley, when I first moved to San Marcos, I lived behind Fire Station Number Two, so right over there off of Rancho Santa Fe Road. And then you've got Santa Leo Hills. We have so many beautiful parts of our city, and I think that North City will be kind of like the icing on the cake here in our city. And really creating that, the space where we are protecting our ridge lines, because that is really important to me, too. And, you know, providing the opportunity to discover life's possibilities, it's our tagline, but I like that councilmember Nunez said that. So I too will be supporting these refinements, is what I call it, at North City. I think that it will create, again, that urban core, because I personally don't want to see all over our city, in the leftover remaining space, all high density. I think it makes sense to have it more concentrated in one area and not all over the city. And, you know, we are an infill city, so we've got, you know, some smaller places or smaller lots still available for people that own them, that have owned them for decades. And, you know, back to what deputy mayor said, she was talking a little bit about, you know, the character of our community, and I like this. I like what's happening, and, you know, back to your reputation and what you've done so far and what's been created so far. I really do, and I'm really excited to see Winston's growing and moving across the way and, you know, attracting more businesses, more entrepreneurs. And one of the things that I think has really been, and believe me, I don't love COVID at all, however, seeing people leaving corporate America and starting small businesses here in the city has been really exciting, in my opinion. And seeing all of these mom-and-pop shops still popping up has been really something that I definitely think has come good from COVID, one of the few things. But also, you know, creating something that's, you know, fun here in the city and having those spaces where they're open and active, I think is really something that I look forward to personally. So with that, I would make a motion to approve the, oh, do I need to go through each one, Madam Counselor?
It is up to you. If you want to do them all together, you can move staff approval.
I would move staff's recommendations for all of the entitlements, the refinements to the entitlements this evening.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, we'll go through a roll call. Deputy Mayor Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilmember Nunez?
Aye.
Councilmember Walton?
Aye.
Councilmember Musgrove?
Aye.
And Mayor Jones, I'm also an aye. Thank you very much. With that, the motion passes unanimously. Okay, moving on, and I have so many notes and things everywhere, so now I'm going to have to find my, ah, here it is, my agenda, oral communications. Do we have any other, no, no more oral communications. We'll give you a couple of minutes to leave if you'd like. You don't have, you can stay for the rest of our meeting, it should be exciting. Just kidding.
Madam Mayor, may I approach the deputy mayor for five documents for the 6,000 units?
Could you please give that to our city clerk, Phil Skolik, please?
Yes, I will, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we are going to, well, no one wants to stay for the rest of the meeting, I feel like a little hurt, I'm just kidding. Okay, so, yeah, no ice cream? Where's our ice cream? No. Okay, so moving on to item number seven, we have San Diego Association of Governments. We had three notable agenda items, one with, excuse me. I was talking so fast, I had a little bit of, little bit of an issue there. Okay, SB 1105. That is the Ben Queso bill that is passing through the Senate right now. And what we talked about was whether we should support that or not. I personally am not wildly crazy about that, because what it sets up is another taxing agency here in the county. The other issue that I have with that is that there is a provision in that, that if one of the agencies, which it would be set up much like Sandag, so it would be a regional agency with, well, be by subregions, so it would be North County inland, coastal, and then South County and inland. And I had an issue with it because if there is one, and the way that it's worded today, if there is one entity or one city that actually meets certain requirements, that they would get all of, well, 50%, half of all of the monies that would be collected countywide, which I have a real issue with, and this would be for affordable housing. So I did not support that. The other discussion that was of note was the removal of the road user charge. So in December, and I know I've discussed this previously, back in December, we had a vote right after the regional transportation plan was actually approved to remove the road user charge. But then what ended up happening is they said, well, we're going to bring it back in six months and we are going to be removing it, we'll have a plan of how we do that. And so what actually happened at Friday's meeting was it came back, and again, they said, oh, well, we're going to come back at a later date. And I asked the director whether we were actually removing our action that day on Friday, whether it would remove the road usage charge, which he said yes, but then our attorney at Sandag stepped in and said, well, no, actually, what it does is that it actually sends us back to come up with a plan and that we would start doing environmental, but at the end, it would only be changed at the end of 2025, but they would be reporting back to us in April of next year. Actually, April is what they told me originally on Thursday when I had a meeting with staff. So it's really not entirely clear when that would come back, but sometime in 2023. And then the other item of note was the 125, which was purchased back in the day when it was, and I'm trying to remember the year and I can't remember off the top of my head, but I had filled in for Mayor Desmond at one point in time, so I was privy to the conversation on that, and that was to purchase a private road that was built with private funds, the 125, and there is currently a toll. So councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Salas from Chula Vista had brought this forward to support a resolution, which I did support the resolution, because I do not believe that we should be paying on, to have toll roads. I don't philosophically agree with toll roads unless they are owned and operated 100% by a private entity, which these are now owned and operated by Sandag. So it's a little bit of a different situation. So anyway, that, we did have unanimous support on that. And then, so those three things were the, I think, the most important items on the agenda on last Friday. And then we meet again, I think it's next week. Yeah, I think it's next week. So anyway, a lot more discussion, but the road user charge is not out of the regional transportation plan, it is still contained as one of the funding mechanisms to pay for that 100, I'm sorry, $165 billion plan at $2020, $270 billion plan at year of expenditure. Did I leave anything out? I know you were at that meeting. I think I went over everything.
Just the one question you asked, Mayor, that the plan that incorporates the road user charge is up at the CARB California Air Resources Board?
It is, it is.
And now their discussion with you specifically was to come up with an amended plan, but they have yet to withdraw the plan from CARB.
They have not, they are seeking approval of a plan that already has been discussed to remove one of the funding mechanisms. And not only is it notable that the funding mechanism is likely to be eliminated, but it also would not meet the greenhouse gas reduction that it needs to actually be approved by CARB. So I do have an issue with that, which I did bring up, and that was not really clear as to why we would have a plan that is a plan that we know will not meet our greenhouse gas reductions of 19% by, yeah, when it's supposed to be implemented. So it'll be very interesting to see what happens moving forward. Oh, where am I? Oh, shoot. The next one is League of California Cities. You're going to be going somewhere, aren't you?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Nunez?
We are, so we are, I'm scheduled and confirmed to attend our annual conference, so it'll be in Long Beach, and it's being held September the 7th to the 9th. I'll be attending, I believe, Jack, you're attending as well, and so we approved tonight. I'll be the voting delegate, and Jack will be the alternate. I haven't seen any resolutions that have come up yet for consideration. We are scheduled to, we are dark this month, so we are scheduled to meet, our next division meeting is in August, so it'll take place August the 8th. It'll be in person, and we should be getting our agenda next week.
Good. So we'll know what you're, what's going to be coming up at the state level, because it always is fast and furious as far as what the legislature.
Typically, the resolutions for the annual conference come up in August.
Okay.
So probably won't know until August if there are any.
Okay.
So we are expecting, we are expecting to be dark, right, for the council in August, but we'll see, I think we'll circulate, right, whatever, whatever's considered.
Perfect, okay.
Councilmember Nunez, I think at the last meeting where we discussed this, we talked about, the San Diego County Water Authority came out to speak, and did we have a discussion, Jack, about inviting them in to give a presentation on the current state of?
Are they on for the next meeting? We actually thought they were going to be tonight, and then I think we moved them, maybe Phil knows them. I think they're on the next meeting.
So sometime in August we'll see them, ideally?
No, I think you'll see them at the 2nd July meeting, because we won't, we're not planning on having an August meeting.
You get to watch remotely, I think, because you're not going to be in town.
If I have connectivity, Mayor.
Well, it'll be taped, so you can always watch it later on your, at your leisure.
I'll set an IVCR.
Okay, there you go.
I think, in all seriousness, we do have our YouTube channel, right? So our meetings are available in our YouTube channel.
North County Transit District.
We had a short meeting today to continue our Zoom meetings, our remote meetings, and our regular meeting will be later this month, and then we'll be dark in August.
Okay. North County Dispatch. I'm like, wait, I looked down there to look for you. I'm so used to going, oh, Randy, councilmember. So yes, do you have anything, North County?
Yeah, thank you. No, we don't meet until August.
Okay. Clean Energy Alliance, councilmember Musgrove?
We did meet at the end of June, and three highlights, I suppose. There have been a couple of vacancies declared for Solana Beach and the City of Del Mar for various reasons, so they're in the process of finding citizens for the Community Advisory Committee, not the electeds. These are the citizens who provide some input and some degree of oversight. We signed or approved a new contract with a new law firm to provide our, both our legislative assistance and also for issues for general counsel services. And we approved our budget. And the one thing that really affects all of us, and I kind of wish this room was full right now, AB 2838, and I brought this up a couple of meetings ago, and it has to do with all the different governmental entities who are moving to CCAs and the impacts on the long-term contracts for SDG&E, PG&E, and SOCal. And AB 2838 essentially precludes them from tacking on to those entities that have moved away from them as a primary, the cost of the contracts. So up until recently, SDG&E offered EcoChoice as an example, where you could sign up and get 50% of clean energy. And so they would let those contracts out, and then as those cities migrated away from SDG&E into their own alliances. SDG&E into their own alliances, SDG&E was arguing, and the other entities were arguing, that, well, we have these contracts now that we're going to pass on that cost to those entities that have left our contract services. Well, this now precludes it from doing that, and also requires that they make those contracts available to those service areas. So depending on market rates, we may be buying some of those contracts out from SDG&E to ensure we have continued service at a reasonable, a reasonable rate.
Well, I was going to say that, being that they're longer term, they're older contracts, it might be more economical.
Some of them are, definitely.
Yeah, okay.
So it'll be a great opportunity for us.
Okay. Great. Business visits. Oh, we had one. Okay, I'm telling the truth when I say this. This place was so cool, 44 gloves. Yeah, they had this one glove, I wish we had a close-up of it. Wait, did you take that close-up of just the glove itself? It was, it had flags all over it. No, it's not in that picture. It's okay. It was actually a really, really fun business visit. But I'll let you start, because you're the one that has the nephew that's a pitcher that actually gets his gloves from this wonderful place.
And I'm not sure how, my nephew came across 44 gloves. Randy Habert used to be a public service officer for San Diego Police Department, and 10, 12, 14 years ago, they did a little drawdown because of budget considerations, so he found himself out of work. And he's, he relocated years ago from Long Island, you can still hear it in his accent, Lindenhurst, and he was looking for something to do to keep the family fed and the rent paid, and he thought, well, what do I do? What do I know? Not really a whole lot, but he loved baseball. So he set up some relationships where he could have gloves made. Initially, he was doing it himself. He's got his business now down in our industrial park off of, essentially, RSF and Melrose, that area. And what they've done is established a business relationship with a company in the Philippines. So that, right there, is Randy's son, and you can go online, and that's how they do most of their business, they go online, although some of the professional ballplayers will come in and deal with them directly. They have a very nice graphics computer where you can design your own glove. They then send that off to their manufacturing plant, where they bring in the raw materials and custom build the gloves, ship them out. When we were there, they'd received, I would say it was probably 20 or 30 large boxes with over 1,000 gloves that had just come in from the Philippines. And the boxes, as soon as we left, they were going to open the boxes, pull them out, compare against the invoices, and ship them out to the requesters that day and the next morning. So they have a very fast turnaround time. The pros, when they ask for something new, they can get it within two weeks, and if you were to go online and order a custom baseball glove, you could have it in about five weeks. They've, they have five employees locally, some front office staff, he has his son working with him, and then a friend of theirs, and it's just, it's incredible, in a fairly small space, they have a very high turnover of product. Right now, they have, I'm looking at the notes we put together, they have 150 major league baseball players that use their gloves. They have an international presence in Japan, Australia, and Korea, and they realized early on that the way you develop this business is, you know, you're not going to attract rully fingers, and I'm dating myself a little bit, hey, try our glove, well, I have a glove, but you provide gloves. And they did this initially, almost as a loss leader in the minor leagues, where these kids and some NCAA players, hey, you're going to give me a glove, I'll try it out. And eventually, you build up a clientele at that level, and those players move up, and people see what they're using, and they say, well, what do you have? Well, this is what I have, and this is, it works for me, and they do custom work. I don't have to buy something off the shelf. I can get exactly what I want, a design I want. They do custom stitching, whatever you want. It's a fantastic business. Right behind us, where we're seated there, is a batting cage. So they have players that will come in and, you know, they want to, maybe they want to see how the glove feels when a ball's coming at them at a certain speed. So where we're seated right there, to our left, our right, your left, as you're looking at it, is the machine. So they drop the ball in at the speed, and at the other end, they can catch, they can hit, they can do whatever they need to do to see how it feels for them. They make some custom hats. Not a whole lot of other, I would say gadgets or anything, but it's just amazing that something like that is in our own backyard. And as the mayor said, I happened upon it looking at my nephew's Instagram page, and he was commenting, hey, you know, this is the glove I use. And so I clicked on their link, and I saw that, what, they were in San Marcos, so Tess, she's still back there. Tess and I did a little coordinating, thank you, Tess. And, you know, they're very, I would say, shy, and it took a little bit of coaxing to get this whole thing organized, to go down there and visit, but once we walked inside, they're extremely accommodating, very happy to see us, and they're looking forward to staying in San Marcos and increasing their business.
So they have 50 options, and most large competitors only have about 10 custom options. And then you could literally go on their computer, and you could have your, every finger of your glove a different color. I mean, it was amazing. And like I said, there was that custom glove that they had, and, yeah, it had flags all over it, you know. Councilmember Musgrove was trying to make me go in the batting cages. I'm smarter than that, you know, I'm not going to be in there with a 100 mile an hour ball coming at me. I could get knocked out and never wake up. Anyway, it was, it was a really cool place, and some of the pitchers actually go in there and practice. They're, yeah, they go in there, and they use their, I'm sorry, they, well, do they bat? No, I think they pitch, I thought he said they pitch. Yeah, there's a pitching mound and everything.
They come in in the offseason and use it.
Yeah, so there are a lot of cool people coming in, actually, baseball players coming in. He started it in 2011. Interestingly enough, 44, you know, he had the plain old 44 there, but then this kid, this young kid, he goes, yeah, I like the logo, but it would be very cool if you flipped the other four, so that's why it's the backwards four. I don't know if you can zoom in on that, but it's, you'll see it, well, Joe Musgrove actually has that glove. So anyway, it has a 44 on it, but the second four is flipped. Anyway, it was, it was a really, yeah, there you go. Anyway, it was, it was a really cool place. He started in his garage in 2011, but anyway, it was, it was a lot of fun going on that, I mean, it was, it was just unbelievable, all the different colors you could get and the leathers. Not many glove places actually offer so many. So with that, San Marcos Creek Project.
Before I get there, Councilmember, it needs to be my major league All-Star nephew from this point forward.
Oh, well.
Because that's a pretty awesome accomplishment.
And he did have a no-hitter, which is...
Who did not provide me a ticket to the game?
Yeah, well.
Gosh.
But to be a major league, a major league All-Star is something very few people can say.
Yes, he did, just qualified this week, actually.
And so on the creek, first off, you can listen to our latest podcast, Isaac was the star of the show.
Oh.
So you can check that out, it's very short and sweet. In terms of updates, two of the six Viejar Bridge piers have been completed, so we're making good progress. A lot of utility work going on, structural work on the Paseo Trail Bridge, and that's pretty much it. No date yet on when we think we'll be able to reopen Discovery, but plugging along, making good progress.
Okay, moving on to council commentary.
I just have a question for you.
Uh-oh.
I see a date on here. Yeah, I see a date.
A date?
It says, current anticipated date of completion.
Oh, yeah, that date's always on there. Oh, you know, you guys don't usually see this.
Oh.
Yeah, that's, that date's probably not the right date.
Okay.
It's later than that date.
Okay, I was just kind of curious about that.
Does it have a year on it?
It does.
Year is correct.
Year's, okay, just checking.
23?
Yes.
And have there been any surprises with the drilling, like we had on Bent?
No, as you might, we did a lot of extra drilling and a lot of extra investigation prior to starting Viejar Creek because of what we found in Bent, so, no, we haven't found anything we didn't anticipate.
I love it when you ask that question, and Isaac's in the back shaking his head and not nodding. That's a good thing.
We'll wipe this out.
Yeah, definitely. Okay, moving on to council commentary. I have a couple of things. There's some exciting things happening in the city as far as ribbon cuttings and reopenings and grand openings, and, so anyway, the first one is Maya's Cookies is coming to North City, and the exciting thing about that is, we've never had a vegan cookie place in our city. They're opening up, and Winston's is going to move, oh, so that's Friday, Friday at 10:00 AM. And then grand reopening of Finally Home is going to be Friday and Saturday, I think it's 11 to 6. And then Winston's is having their grand reopening, because they are going to be moving across the street, co-located with the Maya's Cookies. So that's going to be exciting, and they're having this, this is what she said, 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM, kind of an long, all-day kind of thing. So that's on Sunday, but if you go to their website, you'll be able to find out more information in case that changes. I will try to get all of the details on my, on my social media, too, when I get that back from them, but some exciting things, three businesses, either grand reopening or opening, and, oh, and one thing, too, I don't know if you all noticed, but Winston's is going from 100 square feet to 1,000 square feet. And I know that also Finally Home is going to be significantly growing as well, so we really like that, when our businesses are growing. So anyway, the good thing also about Winston's is they'll be able to make all their ice cream on-site, and so they won't have to cart it in anymore, so it'll be much easier on Chris's back, because he's always, every time I see him, I see him just walking down the street with all of these ice cream barrels on some sort of device that's helping him carry it all, and usually some sort of dolly-looking thing, but anyway, it'll be so much easier because they'll be making it all on-site. So anyway, that's it for me. Oh, Red, White &amp; Boom, good job to staff, and we, you know, someone said, well, why are you making people crowdfund for this? Well, we've always done this, we've, as long as I've been around, we've always done it, not using taxpayer dollars, but actually having people donate, which they're always glad to do that, including myself, and I think everyone on the council actually donated again this year. We sure love to having it and having a beautiful celebration. So anyway, that's it for me. Yes, you look like you were going to say something.
Just real quickly, since you mentioned the 4th of July, if you were not there, it was great, the last maybe 90 seconds, the finale's always when they, there were people screaming, it was so intense. That minute and a half probably had more fireworks going off than most cities put on in a half-hour presentation. It was insane, it was fantastic. I just wanted to thank our staff for a great job tonight. This is a very significant, very important issue that we dealt with tonight, and looking at staff's presentation, and listening to the applicant, and then the members of the community that were speaking, we did not miss anything, we did not skip a beat in the homework that our staff put together for us, and I just want to commend everyone for doing that.
Okay, anything else? Good night, Randy. Thank you. Good night, everyone. Thank you for coming. With that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Night.